Hey Tucker, you guys are still on mute.
I'll start over, or was that recording? I guess it was. Should I start again, or is that recording on channel seventy-nine? Okay. So as I said, we need to amend the agenda to add playoffs theaters, selected construction, demolition, and abatement services. For a total of three hundred eighty-five thousand, oh sixty-five fifty. Do I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor, I?
I.
Okay, so we'll get to that by the end of the... Who's presenting that? Bill and Tiger? We'll do that after after Tiger's at a lodge, really. So first item up is Michael Benevento. Good morning, Michael.
Morning, everyone. How are you?
Public comments. Is everybody from the pub- anybody from the public on?
No one on Zoom.
Anyone from the public here? Well, we will have public comments if anybody wants to send them to, uh, this is a hybrid meeting, so and send comments to BOs distribution@newcanonct.gov and we'll read them. But otherwise, I don't see anybody from the public here to comment. So New Canaan Athletic Foundation. Again, good morning, Michael Benevento. How are you?
Morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. So I'll try to be relatively brief, although I'm sure this won't be the first or the last time that I'll see you over the next couple of months. My intent this morning is to do what I do every year, which is report on our activities, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation activities. Over the past year, as part of the public-private partnership that we have with the town and the memorandum of understanding that we signed back in twenty eighteen or nineteen, I come to each of these boards and let you know the activities, both in terms of the enterprise zone that we run from June fifteenth to August fifteenth, and then also the collection of the player use fees. And I'll do that on an annual basis. So I'll do that this morning, and then I also want to talk a little bit about some of the exciting projects that we have upcoming, our fundraising activities, and to ask for support from the town as we go through the budgeting process. Because these projects will be shovel in the ground come the fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty-four year, so or fiscal twenty, whatever you guys call it, you know, July first to June thirtieth. So that's my intent. I would have put together a a quick presentation for your tablets, but this is, like I said, I don't think it'll be the last time, and the stuff that I'm reporting on, it's just numbers. So I will tell you first for the enterprise zone. So we had another successful year. Again, Bobby Russian ran the enterprise zone for us as our executive director. You all know, I think Bobby's left us to go to Wilton to become the athletic director of Wilton. We have hired, in fact, just voted at our board meeting on Tuesday night this past week that we've hired another new executive director, John Carosa, who is currently a teacher in the high school and is an assistant coach on both the football and lacrosse teams, the varsity football and lacrosse teams. That's really helpful for us to have, you know, boots on the ground in the high school and working with two of the premier programs that use a lot of those fields as we, you know, kind of run the enterprise zone for the summer. And to this, you know, at this point, it, it, I'm not going to say it runs itself, but all of our tenants are pretty well spoken for. And, um, and that was credit to Bobby for, you know, starting this from a de novo basis and really getting it up and running. So in twenty twenty-two, we had total gross revenues of sixty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars from the enterprise zone. That's down actually roughly about twenty-two percent from the eighty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five gross revenues that we had in twenty twenty-one. And that's really due to a single lacrosse event that we ran in twenty twenty-one, a lacrosse tournament, Gauntlet Lacrosse Event, which I believe was the Chip Busio event. And this year, there was, there was a conflict in terms of getting that field space, so we weren't able to do it. That was about ninety-six hundred dollars. And then the other differential was Gold Coast, which is a, the, the women's lacrosse club team. They were down a little bit, about five thousand dollars in terms of hours rented. And UK Elite, which is the New Canaan Football Club, Luke Green's Football Club, they were down about six thousand dollars in terms of ti- hours rented. So I still think highly successful. I think that this coming year, we can be even, we can get those revenues back up if we work ahead of time to make sure that we get full utilization out of the fields. So again, sixty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for gross enterprise zone fees in twenty twenty-two. The other item to report on is the player use fees. And I think you guys know there, there's, for all programs that touch the fields, there's twenty-five dollar player use fee attached to all those registrations. The Athletic Foundation is, as part of the MOU, now collects those fees. And they are equally distributed fifty percent into a turf replacement account, fifty percent into a, into the new enhancements account that are held at the Community Foundation. This year, those totaled roughly eighty-five thousand dollars, which is about on par exactly with what we had last year. We had, we do have one outstanding invoice that I know is being addressed. And it's been an issue for the past couple of years, but I think we're, we're on top of it now. And we're going to get that, and that will actually be a check for about ten thousand dollars is the estimate. So I think the number will actually come in around ninety-five thousand. And then remember, like I said, fifty-fifty to each account. And, and what happens is in the month of February, Andy Gordon, our treasurer, will do the the split fees on this. We come to a net number on the enhancements account, I'm sorry, on the enterprise zone activities. And then a hundred percent of that net number goes into the turf replacement account at the Community Foundation. And then the player use fees, fifty percent goes into turf replacement, fifty percent goes into enhancements. That gets swept over to the Community Foundation funds that we keep once a year, and that'll happen in February. So I'll pause there and ask if there's any questions on the Athletic Foundation activities over the past year.
Yeah, Mike, what were the balances at, the ending balances for those two?
The turf replacement account is roughly at twelve thirty-one is, I actually have it right here. A hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. And that's before anything has been swept in there for twenty twenty-two. That'll happen in the month of February. And then the enhancements account at the Community Foundation right now is at three, three eighty-nine, nine thirty-two. So call it, you know, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that, and that doesn't represent all of our monies, the Athletic Foundation. Enhancements are really private donations outside of the, you know, the, the stuff that gets the fifty percent from the player use fees. Those are private donations. We also have an account at Bankwell that has another substantial balance in it. And I'm not likely to sweep that over to the Community Foundation this year because those will be money spent on these upcoming projects that we're talking about within the next six months. So it's, it's just really, it would be too complicated and for not really any much return to, to invest them for three months just to, to take them out again in our.
You could buy T-bills at four point six percent. But anyway, three, three month T-bills.
I think my time's going to be better spent trying to shake down more people in town to, to contribute to our good cause.
Hey, Mike, Tiger's prepared to share a screen with your plan for Dunning. You want to describe that as your?
So that's, that's the next, that's the next item for me. If there's no questions on this stuff, I wanted to talk about new projects, fundraising, and, and really the budget process.
Go ahead.
So, thank you, Tiger. If he shares the, the screaming of the Dunning renovation, we've all talked about this for a long time now. It was part of the master plan. We really started in earnest back in June with Richter and Seegan from a design standpoint. And I would say now we're at the level where we're in a process of, of value engineering. We got estimates back for the initial cost of the project. And as a reminder, it's a new entrance way to Dunning, it's a new press box, it's new storage facilities, potentially new bathroom facilities. It's a really beautiful upgrade of what we all consider the, the most premier athletic facility in town. And, and so, and it, and one that hasn't been.
In town or in the county?
You know, I would say in the state. I, I can't say in the country because I've been to some places down south that, you know, it would blow your mind, but.
I said county, not country.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely in the county, I think in the state. But, you know, keep in mind, this is a facility that hasn't been touched in really twenty years since it was originally kind of constructed. So I think it's going to be absolutely beautiful. Tiger's put up some renderings here. And, you know, the only thing that I would say right now, and, and there's a large portion of, Tiger can probably speak better to this than I can, site work and traffic engineering that went into this, that will also make the whole physical plant in our opinion, safer, more efficient, and, and really benefits the entire town and the school beyond just what we're touching inside the stadium as part of this project. So that is the, that, that's the one that we are one hundred percent focused on and will get, I believe, shovels in the ground on, you know, call it shortly after graduation this coming summer. I'll pause there for a second to see if there's any questions before I touch on the second project that I think will probably come to fruition in this coming year.
So did you say we have bid yet?
We have, we have not put out to bid. We have cost estimates that have come back and on the advice of council, because we're in the value, value engineering process, I just don't want to share those right this second.
I just wanted to mention, so we now have accumulated three years of three hundred thousand dollars. So we, we have nine hundred thousand dollars for the town side in our annual appropriation of three hundred thousand dollars capitals toward this project.
And we very much appreciate that. I, I can maybe jump to the end if you like.
Go ahead.
As part of these projects, because we're going to be shoveling the ground for this and, and the baseball project that I can talk about, the request from the Athletic Foundation is going to be to ask the town for likely a matching gift to the private funds that we come forward with. That's a little bit of a moving target still, but I can promise you it's going to be far more than nine hundred thousand dollars, which is currently in the, you know, five-year capital plan at three hundred thousand dollars a year that we've accumulated for three years now. And, and as you pointed out, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Far more. Okay, go ahead.
So this is Dunning, super exciting. We've worked on it a long time. I think we're right there and, and we're going to get to a place that's comfortable for both sides, the private and public side to come to a reasonable cost in, in our opinion. And Tiger's been incredibly helpful. The folks at Richter and Seegan have been very helpful. And, and this, in my opinion, is working. Jay Egan has been incredibly helpful. It's working the way that it should as we're talking about a project like this. The second project, which is part of the master plan, which you've all known about, is the, a new construction of a varsity baseball field, which would be up on the campus currently located where the, the JV field is next to Lapham, which is referred, is today, Capo Field. And as I mentioned, that, that's in the master plan, so it shouldn't be surprising that we're talking about constructing a varsity baseball field there. What is surprising and, and what has happened over the last, you know, call it forty-five to sixty days is the baseball community has come forward and, and gained a lot of momentum in terms of getting together, private contributions targeted and restricted for that field. So these would come through the Athletic Foundation. But as you know, we'll, we'll take an unrestricted gift or a restricted gift. And in this case, these would be restricted gifts to go towards the varsity baseball field. Because of that level of momentum and because these, you know, this community and, and the Athletic Foundation are supportive, would like to see something constructed for potentially spring use of twenty twenty-four. That is a project that, you know, we've talked to Richter and Seegan with that timeline and talking to Tiger as well. We think that potentially can get done in that timeline as well. But we would need to really get Richter and Seegan to start now in terms of survey, surveying the site and, and doing the land and, and doing the, the, the architectural and bidding work like they've already done with Dunning. The reason why it's important for us is because that will again fall into this fiscal year and potentially this budget. So that's why I'm saying, you know, our private donations, both unrestricted and restricted to baseball, I think are going to be, well, it's going to be a large number. And, and these two projects together, while they're fantastic and part of the master plan initially weren't intended to be both done in this fiscal year, now I believe they, they can be done. And from my perspective, I would hate to, you know, look a gift horse in the mouth or turn these, these pledges and gifts away if we weren't able to get this done. And, and so the purpose of this and coming in front of everybody through the budget process is to ask for support from the town so that we can fulfill our true public-private partnership.
So Mike, you're, you're asking for a dollar-for-dollar support from the town with respect to both projects?
So if you go back to the last project we did, you know, Water Tower one, two, three, that ended up being roughly fifty-fifty, or what I refer to as fifty cent dollars. And I would tell you, I get a lot of traction from our constituents and our supporters and our donors when I talk about the concept of fifty cent dollars. They, they realize that these are public assets. They realize that they're taxpayers and they want the very best, we all do, for the town and for our school system. But they also acknowledge that they're taxpayers. And so when we talk about fifty cent dollars, they get very comfortable with making those donations because they know that there's skin in the game coming from the town.
So Mike, if we do varsity at Lapham or field behind Lapham, we would have a turf inter- turf diamond?
So that, that is still being discussed. The, the, I think that the baseball community would like to see a full turf field and, and the initial, you know, what we've instructed Richter and Seegan to do is give us a, a cost estimate on what a full turf field would be. And Kevin, you bring up a good point, and I think this is, this is important. From my perspective, probably the biggest complaint or, or what I hear from all of the, the sports and remember, we're, we're in all sports and community mission-founded organization. There's not enough turf in this town, which if you can't believe it, I mean, we built, you know, two and a half new turf fields. And I figured we were releasing some of the bottleneck, and it just seems like there's, there's just a more appetite for it. And, and from my perspective, while we are building a turf varsity baseball field, that's actually just more turf footprint. And so I've used this example a number of times. I was at my son's youth football game in Darien in the fall. And Darien's got a beautiful full turf baseball, varsity baseball field on the campus there. But in the fall, there was youth field hockey throughout the entire outfield and even into the infield. So for our use purposes, this is really just more turf footprint on the campus that will relieve some of that bottleneck that we talk about and that I hear about often when it comes to, you know, organizations and, and whether it's youth or varsity athletes wanting to get on the turf.
Yeah, the reason I raised the question because I think John Howe has proposed Connor Field renovation, which is the JV baseball. And
So Connor, my understanding is the Capo Field up next to Lapham is currently used for JV. Connor, which is down on the other side of Saks, is used for freshman baseball. And if we take a step back, there's really three sixty, ninety fields in in New Canaan. And, and it's Mead Park, the Capo and Connor. So what we're talking about is really just flip-flopping Mead Park and Capo from varsity and JV. That, that will still, obviously, Mead Park will remain a beautiful sixty, ninety field with natural turf that many organizations, JV, Babe Ruth, other town organizations can utilize as baseball field. We would just have one as synthetic turf up at the high school for the varsity. The Connor renovation, we can talk about, the Athletic Foundation hasn't been involved in that only because it's outside of our master plan.
Right. Further questions for Michael? Mike, are you done? Or do you have some more comments to make?
I would just-
Question, sorry.
Yes.
I was on mute, sorry. Thank you, Michael, for this presentation. Really appreciate it. Could you just give us an estimate on what you're thinking about for the varsity field in terms of overall cost? And I know you want fifty-fifty, but just what was the total on that one?
So I can tell you that the email that I received from, from Mike Seegan last night, because I had asked him, I knew I was going to get this question, and he, the, the level of caveat that he gave when he gave me a number, given that the site hasn't even been surveyed yet.
Right.
You know, he wouldn't want me to put that number out there. I can tell you it will be more than two and a half million dollars, less than five million dollars. But I, I, listen, Kathleen, I, I have a better sense. And, and there are many things that, again, can be value engineered in here, like, you know, that, that, the high end of that is all bells and whistles, right? Including lighting and, and all this other stuff. There's, there's a concept that because of the way the topography, it's actually a really interesting space. If you, if you go up there, if you remember, it, it falls off behind the backstop. And so what you can do is create stadium seating around, you know, which is what a normal, you know, base, like premier baseball field would look like with two dugouts, like sunken-down dugouts on, on the first and third base side. But then below that stadium seating, you could have everything from bathrooms, concessions, and certainly storage. So you can imagine the, the kinds of, you know, what happens to numbers when you start talking about concessions and bathrooms. And, and I think Tiger would tell you, and we're all dealing with a lot of bathroom talk with the Dunning renovation. And, and, you know, the cost that comes along with that. So toilets are expensive. But I would tell you, and this is, this is just speaking almost as much as a parent than anything else. I do get a lot of support for bathrooms in that campus because you know, people hate going into those porta-johns. And especially up in that corner where you have, you know, a lot of drop-off and activity in the corner of Water Tower one, there's one porta-john today that services that whole corner. If we build something up there like a new varsity baseball field and there's more activity happening up on that part of the campus, we're just going to have to have bathrooms. And you know, similar, maybe there's standalone bathrooms like the one that's up in, next to where the ice rink is now in Waveney. But like that, that's, that's a bigger problem that I don't want to address here, but but we have to talk about it as part of, you know, the, the whole master plan. That's why I'm, I'm not going to give you, I can't give you a, and Mike Seegan would not want me to give you a number. But, but to be fair, I know you need a number. And, and I'm getting everybody drilled down on numbers as we get through this budget process. And, and to be fair, my fundraising is still a moving target, right? Like, I know the dollars that I have in there today, I know the dollars I have committed. But, you know, this campaign is still ongoing. And the last thing I'll mention is, you know, we had that very successful fundraiser back in November at the Country Club of New Canaan. And at that fundraiser, we announced two additions to the master plan, which I think have been reported on with the turf at Saks and potentially a basketball facility. But the, the other thing that was important was that's when we publicly said that we would be, we've, we've named this campaign, the Marinelli Campaign, our fundraising campaign. And our intent is if we raise north of a million dollars, that will go to town bodies. And I'm going to Parks and Rec on February eighth, and ultimately, it will have to be approved by town council. But our intent as part of the, the triple P, we have, you know, the right to ask for naming rights. And we're going to ask to name Water Tower one, the Lou Marinelli Youth Football Complex. And, and I think we're definitely going to be through that million-dollar number. So I, I feel comfortable saying that that will be our intent, which will also happen during, you know, this process, because I'd like to do that prior to next fall.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
So Mike, perhaps you could call Kirk Casali and see if he's interested in helping Kirk Casali Stadium?
It, Casali, yes. It's also been pointed or brought to my attention that Zach Allen made the Pro Bowl and is in a contract year. I'll just leave it, I'll leave it at that.
Anyway, we have to wrap it up, Mike, because we have.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for the NCAF. I mean, this is, you know, fantastic that we're in a position to talk about additional upgrades and such. And I'm hugely supportive. You know, this NCAF in part came out of a walk that I had with Alex Whitten and Jay Egan about fifteen years ago when we were looking to actually install an indoor facility, as you may recall, up on, up, up, up at Waveney. And you know, the takeaway now is, is hugely important for the town. And again, I thank you for all your efforts.
Well, you, you're welcome. But my takeaway from that, Nick, is that you were actually able to get away from this at some point. And so my, not unlike Bob Iger at Disney, I, I need to identify a successor so I can get out of this seat at some point.
On that point, Mike, I'd like to thank you personally for the leader of, of the foundation and also the board and also the donors. You know, the Athletic Foundation is an amazing public-private partnership. And as with the Waveney Conservancy, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing without you guys. So thank, thank you to all of you. And to Kathleen, do you want to make any final comments?
Oh, just grateful. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Nine oh one. I think next up is Steve Beschinstein for the Waveney Park Conservancy. PB, why don't you come up as well?
Okay. Hold on one second here.
PB is the executive director of the Conservancy and also our part-time employee for our wedding coordinator.
I am now, and let me share screen. Is that, do you see that? There we go.
Can't talk, any news?
That, um, see, is that coming up now?
Not yet. Something like that, yeah.
Share screen, yeah.
No, no, don't, don't do that.
I, I.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Bye.
I'll bring it up. Why don't you take me through it since they have a copy?
I don't know why that's not coming up. Apple clutch. What's that? Have a screen, you just stand up. Well.
Thank you.
That's.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I'll work on getting up here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can you all hear me? Okay, great. Um, well, first of all, thank you all for letting us come in and give you a update on the activities. Um, well, first of all, thank you all for letting us come in and give you a update on the activities of Waveney Park Conservancy. Um, and I think what we'd like to do this morning is review what we've accomplished over the past year and give you a little bit of a preview of what we hope to accomplish in uh, the year ahead. Um, I think everyone knows uh how we're organized, which is that we're private five oh one C three, but we work in close partnership with the town of New Canaan under memorandum of understanding. Um, and our role is basically to advocate for the parklands of Waveney and to assist in the development, funding and execution of both capital improvements as well as critical maintenance projects within the park. Um, so to get into the review, two thousand and twenty-two was a busy year for the Conservancy. Uh, we focused very considerable attention on both building organizational capacity. And we advanced a number of existing projects and tackled several meaningful new projects. Um, our year started with the hiring of Phoebe Knowles as our first executive director. Um, and we also established a physical office in Waveney House. Uh, now Phoebe is charged with increasing our efficiency and administration, project management, fundraising and communications and programming. And we were also very gratified during the year to be awarded a, a budget allocation from the town of three hundred thousand dollars, which for every dollar you spend, we will match that. Um, and we hope that that's going to become a recurring stream of income. It's been extremely helpful in uh, enabling our planning as well as moving more quickly on project execution. Now, on the project front in two thousand and twenty-two, we continued to focus on uh both maintaining of the uh Anderson Pond as well as Jennyum Meadow. Um, for the pond that mostly uh focused on making sure that all of the plantings around the pond and the systems to keep the pond clean are well maintained. Uh, within the meadow itself, uh, there's a whole series of ongoing maintenance tasks that have to happen. In addition to that, we replaced some plantings that had died or had been injured in drought or deer situations. We also uh installed near deer fencing to protect some of the plantings in the uh meadow. We installed new bird habitat and bird boxes with the assistance of the Audubon Society. And we were also in the process uh right now. In fact, I think today we're going to receive uh a series of new educational signs that will be installed in the meadow. Um, also during two thousand and twenty-two, we completed our restoration of the forecourt of Waveney House. And as you're probably familiar with, in prior years, we've uh installed all new foundational plantings as well as a new hedge row at the beginning of the courtyard, uh, which makes a significant difference. But this year, uh, we uh power washed and repainted off the courtyard walls. We installed new outdoor lighting. Uh, we installed climbing trellises, which should uh bloom and flower over the next several years. And we installed an alley of mature trees on both sides of the courtyard. And if you haven't been up there recently, uh, it looks spectacular and uh uh, I think it's only going to get better as those plantings have an opportunity to establish themselves. Uh, we also took over responsibility from the town for ensuring that the various planters surrounding Waveney House are professionally planted on a three season rotation. Um, this is a fairly minor project, but actually it's, it's something a lot of people overlook as they walk around the house. They say, boy, things are looking pretty good. But part of that is that you have things like the planters well planted. Um, we removed the.
Also mentioned our part-time gardener.
And, and we have a part-time gardener, Ray Martin, who is, uh, the town has supported, um, who is spending time primarily uh around Waveney House and the adjoining gardens, making sure that those were well maintained as well. And that's very helpful and just what I call the micro maintenance, which is detailed, but that detailed maintenance makes a, a big impact.
I think the Lapham family had like thirty gardeners, so.
Yes, that's correct. We can always use more. Um, uh, we removed the beloved, but unfortunately dying white oak, oak tree at the bottom of the sledding hill and replaced it with another sizable white oak. Um, and we also harvested the lumber from the tree that came down, which is in the process of curing. And we hope that within about a year, we'll be able to repurpose that lumber into a series of products uh, like benches or other types of products that we may be able to sell to support fundraising within the park. And then on the new project front during two thousand and twenty-two, uh, we reset all of the flagstone walkways surrounding the various gardens uh to the left of the house. Um, and that significantly improved not only their accessibility, but their safety and appearance. And uh that actually was a pretty amazing project to look at. Um, the, the craftsmanship of the masons that did it was outstanding. They did a great job. Um, and when you saw what went into putting those walkways in originally, they, they didn't mess around. Uh, some of those curbs go close to four feet into the ground. So that was a large project to reset all of that, but it looked great.
We should also give a shout out to Bill Brock, who really kind of.
And yeah, thank you. And Bill Brock uh was major supporter of that project. So we're very grateful to him and his family for doing that. Um, we also closed out the year finally by planting over ten thousand uh native plants around the entrances of Waveney and coming up the entranceway from South Avenue to Waveney House. And these will take some time to become fully established, but it will create a new color palette and new textures that reveal themselves differently throughout the year. And uh, after that has an opportunity to establish itself, it should look spectacular. Um, so that closed at two thousand and twenty-two and that brings us to two thousand and twenty-three and we have another ambitious set of plans uh for the year. Uh, right now, we're in the process of restoring the Eberly Fountain Sculpture. That's the centerpiece of the gardens. Um, we've engaged professional art curation and sculpture restoration service to clean the fountain, uh, remove harmful surface deposits and oxidation and install a protective coating. And finally, to fix the plumbing so that the fountain will actually fully work. Um, and that should be completed and the fountain should be reinstalled by March. Um, we plan to complete a project to beautify and rebuild the service area to the left of Waveney House. This is the area where most of the loading bays are and the dumpsters are. And if you look at the house today, it's frankly kind of an eyesore. So we've been working on plans over the last several years to uh redesign, re-landscape and rebuild that area. And that project is currently out to bid and we hope that if we get reasonable bids in, uh, we'll be able to start work on it this spring. Um, we've agreed to contribute up to half the cost, repair the roof of the walled garden sitting area. Uh, and we've also agreed to jointly fund a new arbor plan for the park with the town. And once that plan's complete, we plan to assist uh in funding the installation of new specimen trees uh called for within the uh plan with the town. Um, the next item that we are going to focus a lot of attention on this year is creating a plan, hopefully by the end of the year, to create one to three options for enhancing the Merritt Parkway Trail. And if you're familiar with that trail, you're not, you'll know that it's very, very exposed to the merit. You see the merit and you hear the merit. And we hear frequently from our constituents that that's something that really detracts from their enjoyment of the park. And by the way, there are about five thousand people per week uh that actually use those trails. So this is something that is a, a big deal. It's uh a significant portion of our strategic plan looking out over the next five years. And it will most likely involve bringing together landscape and engineering professionals along presumably with obviously town officials, individuals who are associated with the Merritt Parkway Conservancy and probably state officials. There are going to be a number of people that have to be in the mix to uh, help plan what can be done there. Um, and our hope is that we'll be able to bring all these folks to the table and create a set of options by the end of the year. And then the next step will be selecting which of those options we think is the most realistic. Uh, and then hopefully we will be able to begin implementing uh that plan in the following years.
Are you, are you going to build a wall? Is that, because you, you mentioned sound. I mean, is that one of the?
You know, I number one, I want to be careful here because I, I do think this is an area where we've got to bring in a lot of expertise. Um, there's been discussion on walls. There's been discussions on berms. There's been discussions on just additional landscaping. Can we put more trees in to, to block it? My guess is that the options that are developed are going to encompass a combination of those uh different options, um, and perhaps some others that we haven't thought of. Um, but whatever we do, it will be tasteful and it will be a collaborative process.
I think that would be a huge upgrade for uh for Waveney. I mean, it, you know.
Well, I, I think so too. And that's something we hear all the time. And you know, kudos to the town because uh the area actually looks better today than it did. And, and Tiger and his crew removed the old rusted chain link fence that ran along uh most of that perimeter as well as a lot of the scrubby stuff that was there that looked just terrible. But it is interesting. You get rid of some of that stuff and you notice the merit even more to hear even a little bit more. And we've certainly received a lot of comments from people saying, isn't there something you can do about that? And you know, you don't feel like you've got traffic passing you as you're trying to go on a nice run or walk. Um, so I think it would make a huge difference. I think it'd be a transformational project. And it's going to be an expensive project. I don't know what the expense will be right now, but it will be expensive. But it's also a project that I think we can do over the course of a number of years. So we don't have to absorb all of that at once and uh, and we can take our time to some extent on it. Uh, so I, I, I don't want people to get scared off by the fact that it could be a potentially costly project. I think it's a a project that lends itself well to doing in phases over a period of time. Um, we'd also like to develop a plan this year and it, which may be a subset of the arbor plan to improve the appearance and usability of the wooded area. Uh, between the western courtyard wall and the driveway that's there. So if you're thinking of waving and looking at it uh head on to the right is a parking area. And in between the courtyard and that parking area is sort of a wooded area, which frankly looks pretty scraggly. And given the uh, given the amount of money we've just spent as well as the progress we've made in beautifying the courtyard, it seems logical to think about how we might be able to clean up that kind of scraggly looking area. So that's another area we'd like to put some attention on this year. Um, finally, we've had a, a uh forestry plan on the books for a number of years. Uh, that has not been a priority up until now, but we'd like to pay a little bit more attention this year to uh updating that and then beginning to uh implement some of the recommendations within that plan. And then last is that we are evaluating uh and, and may potentially implement a more robust art in the park program, possibly beginning with an installation of art benches. Um, and I have some pictures I can show you in a minute on that, but this stems from an idea of, of Carol Clarkson, who is with the Jennium Foundation. Um, Carol asked us to put some benches in the meadow, which we've done, but there's the traditional uh teak benches. But in the process of asking that, she showed us some pictures of benches that she's seen in various locations of the world. And some of these are almost sculptures and we've tracked down some of the bench makers. We also know there are some people, some craftsmen in town that might be able to, for example, repurpose some of the oak wood into really cool benches that, that actually are almost artworks. They're usable, but they're also almost artworks. And we think it could be kind of cool to intersperse a number of those, not only throughout the meadow, but possibly in other locations in the park. We think it might draw some people in um, and create sort of an attraction within the park. Uh, so again, that's something that we're in the process of evaluating right now. Um, and we hope to promote all this with a more proactive communication and event plan, which is intended to tell our story, drive engagement and support fundraising. So I, I might just uh Tucker, can you roll forward to just here are some pictures of some of the completed projects in uh two thousand and twenty-two? If you just want to take a moment to take a look at what's a visual against some of the bullet points.
Those uh black stone walkways are just amazing. ADA compliant now?
I don't know if any of you saw the amount of plant material that was staged before they actually installed the plants uh all along a driveway and the entrances, but it was a staggering amount of plant material. Um, these, these pictures don't quite do it justice, but it was, it was amazing. And then Tucker, yeah, why don't we go up to two thousand and twenty-three? Um, couple of things I'll point out here. There's the statue, which will be coming back, should look even better and, and work properly. This uh middle picture is the uh elevation of what the service area should look like when the project is completed. Um, we think that's going to make a huge difference in the appearance of that area. And it's also going to be much nicer when brides, a lot of brides walk out in front of that area down to the walled garden to take their bridal photos. And right now they're, they're walking out right next to dumpsters and you know, storage bins and things like that. So this will make a significant difference in the appearance of that area. Forestry plan and um I think we don't have to focus too much on that, but maybe in the lower right-hand corner, um Tucker, just to give you a little sense, this is, these are a couple of examples of some of the benches that we're talking about. Um, and this would have to be felt self-funding. We'd have to find folks that were willing to help, help us purchase these, but and we'd obviously have to get uh agreement from the town, um, because this differs from some of the current bench policy, but we think this could be pretty cool if we had a number of these throughout the park. Um, or something sort of in this, in this uh general arena. So that's, that's the formal part of the presentation. I'd like to again, thank the town very much for the three hundred thousand dollar allocation that it made the last fiscal year. Um, and I hope that that will be recurring again. It's been incredibly helpful, not only for our own planning, but it's also allowed us to accelerate uh how quickly we've been able to tackle projects relative to what we were able to do in the past. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
You know, Waveney's never looked better. I mean, it's, it's pure and simple, but we've still got additional work to do. And I'm hugely supportive. I was just looking, where is it in the budget? And the um, for Josh, the three hundred thousand? I'm, I'm looking at on a part. As opposed to public works.
As, as is the Athletic Foundation, right?
Yep.
Kathleen, you have any questions?
Okay. Is, is, is three hundred enough, Steve?
I, I think for the, you are muted. I think for the immediate timeframe, it is not. Um, I think we, we've have visibility that we'd be able to absorb that. The current three hundred thousand, we have uh we will have largely expensed by the end of the fiscal year. Um, and then looking ahead, uh, I think we'll spend a significant chunk of the new three hundred. And then um, as we get into two thousand and twenty-four and beyond, that's when presumably we are going to have clearer plans on uh the Merritt Parkway Trail. And I think that will absorb a substantial amount of that. Could we use more? Waveney can always use more. No question about it. Um, but we want to be cognizant of the fact that these are town finances and you're responsible.
And to be clear, we're not just, it's not just three hundred thousand we're spending on Waveney. We've got the Powerhouse Theater. We've got drainage. We've got other stuff. It's it's online. But I mean, you know, this is the crown jewel of New Canaan. It's been said before and we, we've got to do what we can you know, to get it up to speed. ADA is important. We need to be compliant and um, that, you know, that's, that's critical. So.
Just to, to clarify also, Nick, just that three hundred thousand, it's our intention to match that. So for that three hundred thousand, that means we're really spending six hundred thousand on an annual basis uh on capital improvements and maybe some.
Fifty percent dollars is, is uh, as Mike Benaventos said.
That, that's what we're, we're striking for. Could there be variations from that or situations that might call for that? I'm sure there could be, but uh um, and may there be situations in the future where we could come and ask for a special appropriation for something? Absolutely.
Kathleen?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Uh, really appreciate this update. Um, just, uh, and you actually started to talk about that, but of the annual uh philanthropic fundraising that you're doing, how is that going? I mean, are you seeing a fairly steady um ability to raise funds, not on a special project basis, but just in general, in annual fund? How's that going for you? And, and what's your prospects for the upcoming year?
Well, so it was interesting. Last year, we actually, the number of what I call sort of retail or smaller donors actually uh declined. But uh, our actual revenues were up. So we uh, we raised about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. Um, and again, that came from a variety of sources. It came from a number of smaller donors. It came from some people that gave fairly generously. It came from foundation grants. Um, and some of our, our traditional funders, the, the Jennium uh Clarkson family of the Jennium Foundation and the Andersons were once again very generous on some things. Bill Brock was extremely generous with us on a couple of projects. Um, and so looking ahead, we're hopeful and we've received indications from some of those that they continue to want to be generous, but we're also focusing more attention. And this is something Phoebe is uh putting a lot of time into. Uh, not only looking at our existing donor base to say, is there potentially more capacity there that we haven't tapped? But what are other foundations that perhaps haven't given to uh Waveney Park Conservancy that are in the area that support the kind of conservation work that we do? Or alternatively, if we do some more art in the park, would be inclined to support that. And how do we get in front of those folks and make an ask? And we think that we've got a great story to tell. So we think there is additional uh, additional room to raise. Additional room to raise uh, a greater amount of funds, but it's, it's ambitious and to be very clear. If the town is giving us uh, three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and we're offering to largely match that, that means that at a minimum, we have to raise three hundred thousand dollars a year. And then with overhead um, with paying for most planning and design, which typically we do. That probably means that a minimum, we need to be able to raise four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars a year. If we want to sort of keep pace uh, with uh, the schedule of projects that we have and continue to move them forward uh, meaningfully.
We needed John Paulson, who gave a hundred million dollars to the Central Park Conservancy. So anybody out there who's interested in being a John Paulson? Steve, I'd like to thank you personally. I mean, you're the fourth chairman and, and doing a fabulous job leading the conservancy. Um, you have a great board now. Um, and all the donors. So you know, it's just, just like with the Athletic Foundation, this wouldn't happen without the public private partnership, which is terrific. Terrific. You're doing a terrific job. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your support and uh, for the town's support. It's a, it's a crown jewel and I think everybody's happy to pull together to make sure Waviney is successful.
And this partnership together with the NCAF shows the incredible generosity of the Canaan citizens and thank them. Thank you for all your work and, and Phoebe. Glad to have you aboard.
Okay. Ahead of schedule. We're behind? Way behind? Okay, let's uh, quick. We're going to do the agenda first. Okay. Item four. Waviney Park Tree Master Plan, as Steve just referred to the, you've got Tiger coming up for four items. Scott House, okay.
Morning.
Good morning, Tiger.
So uh, to uh, piggyback off of what Steve and Phoebe just mentioned, um, we went out and um. Solicited a, a proposal from Keith Simpson Associates to uh, help us with a Waviney Park Tree Master Plan. Uh, they came back at fifteen thousand dollars for the scope of work. As Steve mentioned, uh, this will be a fifty fifty share with the conservancy. We're quite excited to uh, bring this forward. Cause this will um, partner with the a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds that we have for their parks as well. Um, so we just like to get this plan going. Um, and then start to, start planting trees and making the park even more beautiful.
So the Conservancy's board approved this Tuesday night. So we're, any questions for Tiger on this item?
Not here.
I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter to uh. Contract with Keith Simpson Associates for fifteen thousand dollars to be shared with the Waviney Park Conservancy fifty fifty. Um, for the uh, Arbor Master Plant Tree, Tree Master Plan. Primarily using uh, ARPA funds on the town side, but be, to be matched with, by the conservancy. So second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 You want to, do you want to run through a couple of other orders while you're up here or do you?
If you want to go out of sequence, yeah.
Well, why don't we go to sequence? We'll come back.
All right. So the uh.
Number seven?
Seven. So this next one is a purchase of Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons. For two locations, both were uh, vetted by and approved by the Police Commission. Uh, last week, the first one is um, uh, South Avenue at Maple Street. This is uh, in conjunction with the, the new library project. They've got staff crossing the street to St. Louis, just to the parking area. St. Ace utilizes the library as their library. And we uh, envision a lot more foot traffic coming through um, to that area. And then the second is uh, on Gower Road at South School. There's a uh. Crosswalk, a mid-block crosswalk that gathers the Douglas Road area students to come across the uh. The road uh, Gower um, onto the brand new sidewalk that we just installed um, along the uh, the park um. The playground itself and then leads to South School and uh, the areas beyond. So we went to East Coast Sign, who has been supplying our uh, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacons. Um, they came back with a price of twenty-one thousand nine fifty plus nine hundred and fifty dollars for freight. For a total cost of twenty-two thousand nine hundred. Um, this price was uh, nearly the exact same price that they provided for us last year. So um, for the beacons that we put in last year. So we recommend that we go forward with that uh, that purchase.
And Tiger, these things really work, right?
Ninety-two percent adherence rate. Yeah, it's about the best sign that's out there. Um, you know, we do have some people that still shoot through it. We have people that pass school bus, you know, stop school bus. Can't stop everybody, but you know, all we ask is that this, the, the pedestrian push the button, wait for it to be activated. Make sure the cars are slowing, make eye contact as always, and then cross the street. But um, studies have shown it's a ninety-two percent adherence rate after installation, meaning that people will, you know, adhere to it immediately. But then post-installation, six months, a year along the way, it's still at ninety-two percent, which is uh, much better than any other sign installation that's out there.
And, and getting it at the same price is great because we're, you know, we've got sup- supply chain issues across the board.
Exactly.
Elsewhere.
So this is actually South Avenue crossing.
It's a South Avenue crossing.
But it, it, is the library going to have it from the parking lot to the front door?
They already have it. They, they just, yeah, they didn't put it in.
They installed it.
They installed that last week, right? And then uh, we'll be opening up that road very shortly. Uh, Maple Street will be reopened very shortly, but that's already in. Um, it's been uh, tweaked, so it should uh, be operating quite well now. Maria uh, Copland, our town engineer, went down and inspected it last week. So um, that, that's in at their cost.
Any further questions, Kathleen?
I just, they're supported by batteries and solar. Is that right Tiger? And are those, how long do those batteries last? If that's the case?
The, the batteries will last for several days outside of a solar charge. But there has, there has not been a problem of it not functioning. Um, you know, where the battery's been depleted uh, due to the lack of solar charge. It, it doesn't draw very much energy to uh, to activate.
Okay. So they're long lasting?
Very long lasting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with East Coast Signs in the total of about twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars as described by Tiger for the installation of two. RR FPs.
Second here.
All in favor? Bye.
Want to do item eight?
Yes.
So this next is uh, the replacement of the railing at the Waviney Paddle Lodge. Um, there's a couple of pictures um, in the memo. During our discussions with the Department of Justice, um, this railing unfortunately was um. Shorter than the ramp itself um, and didn't have the necessary return at the end. As well as it didn't have an interior railing. We have an interior railing along the porch, but not an interior railing on the ramp itself. So the Department of Justice came back and said that we needed to have a railing on both sides of the ramp, not just one. And it had to extend the full length of the ramp um, where it meets the uh, the existing um, parking lot. So we went to uh, Vinnie's Custom Metal. That used to be uh, Steve's Custom Iron Works. He purchased it from him. Um, we had been working with Steve's for a very long period of time. Vinnie was one of the people on their shop. They've done excellent work for us in the past. And uh, they came back with a price of eleven thousand nine hundred dollars for the replacement of the railing, the removal and the replacement of the railing.
Since this is obligatory, I move we have uh. Approve this request from Public Works in the total amount of eleven thousand nine hundred dollars as described by Tiger for the replacement of the railing at Waviney Paddle Lodge. Uh, second?
Second, but with a question, is there any uh, reuse available for the existing?
Not necessarily. It's, it's, it's a, we don't have any other railing of, of that look and feel anywhere, unfortunately.
So it's going to go in the swap shop?
It'll go into a recycling metal spin.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. And why don't we keep you here while, but we add the item for, I'm trying to make up time here. So.
That's fine. So the next item is uh, for the Playhouse Theater for a selective construction demolition and abatement service. Um, as you, as you recall, we went to Alden Bailey for a, a design build. This is the next phase of that. So we have for selective demolition, uh, removal of the chimney and uh, some of the flooring. Um, we have ninety-three thousand twenty dollars with a twenty percent contingency of eighteen six oh four for a total of a hundred and eleven six twenty-four. Then we have further abatement from areas one and two uh, for a hundred and three thousand dollars. And then we're looking to construct the new elevator shaft, the shaft only to then, since this is a six to eight week project. Um, to get this done while we're finalizing the design drawings that will go to a building and a P and Z. That's for a hundred and forty-eight to ten for, with a fifteen percent contingency of twenty-two thousand two thirty-one fifty for a total of a hundred and seventy thousand four forty-one fifty. All in, it's three hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred dollars with a contingency of forty thousand eight thirty-five fifty for a total of three eighty-five oh sixty-five fifty. And the funds are currently available.
Sorry Tiger, what are areas one and two? Is that, that like area fifty-two?
Area fifty-one? Yeah, no.
Fifty-one, yeah.
It's on the plans that identify the areas. And there's um, four actually um, uh, areas. And the fourth one is uh, something that uh, we're still in discussion about whether it needs to be done.
What are we looking at in terms of abatement? What do we know? What do we think we know? What do we don't know?
Well, we do know we have a lot of the, the system around the piping, the uh, the whole heat system and what have it. That's mostly what it is. Uh, there's some mastic on the floors that we'll be dealing with. Um, but ninety-nine percent is all about the pipes at this point. For this, for this, for this typical pool. Uh, we can't touch the boiler system, nothing until we bake that. And even all the hot water pipes that we're doing that through the building. So we might get all that out of the way because that's.
I mean, the contingency is more than ten percent.
Yes. Uh, now I'm, I'm sorry. We didn't put a contingency on that because we still had a twenty-five thousand dollar um, approval in the past for an allowance for additional abatement work. So I didn't put no contingency on that. We already have, have money in place for the contingency based.
Okay.
Bill, you should give Kathleen and Nick a tour like we had last week. I mean, it's absolutely amazing.
Love to do it.
It's a, a big, a big change.
So we had a great meeting last Friday night at Waviney House with the Cinema Lab folks and the twenty-five or so families in town who have been investors in uh, of two point three million dollars they raised. Um, so this is all partnering with them on the cost of the, the renovations of the outside and the, the town's doing the outside and a lot of the inside ADA work. And so this project is moving along. We want to keep it moving along so we can open by. By the anniversary year this year. So it's a hundred years old this year. We will. We will open up in two thousand twenty-three. I move, we approve this request from Public Works.
One more question. Sorry Kevin, I apologize. Just a question. Th- this is a change order approval. So is, what was the original approval for this type of work? Are you adding to something that we've already approved or this is changing what we originally had approved? And how much is the change?
Yeah, it, well, what it's, it's listed as a change order only because we have a contract in place. And then the change order is actually adding this work towards the original contract since it's. And then the next phase, as we come forward for the construction will be exactly that. Another change order to add the construction phase in. So.
These are not changing something that was originally put in place and you found out it costs you more.
Kathleen, remember this is design bills. So we're going along, the architects are designing it as we spend and uh.
I, I understand. I just, I want to clarify the word change order. Um, that's, I just want to understand. This wasn't something that we put in place. Came in, found out that it's going to cost a little bit more. This is just adding to the overall project as you go along. Is that correct?
Yeah, it could have been considered a contract amendment, but it, you know, it's construction.
Is it, is this in the budget?
It's in the budget. That's correct.
And just as Tiger was saying for change orders, because we already did the legal diligence on it and uh, bonds and everything in our place, we just increased them. Instead of starting over again with the contract every time. So it's, it's uh, provisions in the AIA, AIA contract documents. Things to keep uh, moving right along.
Got it.
So we're on budget. It's not in the budget, but it's on budget.
Part on budget and I'm getting uh, positive feedback at the moment that we are staying within the budget. So that's my goal.
We're on budget.
Budget. At present, we're on budget.
Okay, I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a change order with Alden Bailey as described by Tiger for a total of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Sixty-five and fifty uh, for the Playhouse Theater project. Second?
Second here.
For the discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go back quickly to, and wrap up the other few items. We have uh, John Howe here for baseball. Rumor.
Morning. So we'd like to purchase uh, um, ABI Force Z twenty-three S T from Alta Equipment Company of Hookshead, New Hampshire. They are the only company that provides this machine. Now, this is in the capital budget and we were trying to purchase it earlier. And the company with supply chain issues was not even accepting orders. So with this, they'll now accept an order and we should have it to begin in May, which is perfect time for baseball season when we groom the fields daily.
Any questions?
In, in the budget, John?
It's in the budget, yes.
I don't think we bring anything what was, wasn't in the budget or we tell you. So I think.
Just to make it clear.
Yeah. Questions, Kathleen?
No.
I move the, we approve the request from Public Works. Oh, this is from the Parks Department Capital Budget. To uh, enter into a counter with Alter Equipment Company for a ABI Force Z two-three S T Field Groomer. For thirty-two thousand, four, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, John. Uh, Chief Bassett. So we're going to keep you waiting, but.
Good morning, Board of Selectmen. Fire Department's requesting thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars fifty cents. For a replacement purchase of ten SCBA cylinders, which is a replacement of our ex- cylinders that have expired at fifteen years. This is uh, in our budget, our twenty-three capital budget and available.
Questions?
Can we just see this in the capital request for next year's budget?
Yes, uh, it's ongoing. Uh, we have a um. About seventy-eight cylinders um, that span over fifteen years. So it's, they're going to be on regular replacement over those fifteen years instead of a one purchase. Um, when they all expire at once. So they, they are spread out over those fifteen. So that's why you see it on a uh, reoccurring uh, capital.
They expire. They expire by their manufacturer or by, by OSHA rules?
Correct. Uh, NFPA and Department of Transportation, uh, they expire. NFPA requires fifteen years for them to go out of service.
So it looked like it was there, you, you asked for this every other year. Is that correct? Or do you have, the cylinders have to be replaced every year? Just looking at the capital.
Correct. Prior to uh, it was every other year. Uh, we reinventoried uh, last year and we had a large group. That came uh, due for replacement between uh, twenty-two and twenty-four. That's why we did it. Uh, two, possibly three years in a row, we asked for the replacement money.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I move we approve the request from the Fire Department to purchase ten SCBA cylinders from MES Shippens Fire Equipment in the amount of thirteen thousand eight ninety-two. And fifty cents as described by Chief Bassett. Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Have a good day. Tax, tax over. Number nine. Who's um, we have fifteen automobile refunds, our tablets. I move we approve them.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Neglected Cemetery Grant, Mr. Riley. I have a resolution or to, to read here?
Before I start, I'd like to say that I am working on larger grants than this one. To compete with all these public private partnerships. Uh, but uh.
Twenty-seven, we have twenty-seven neighborhood cemeteries and.
Yes, and the, the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management offers neglected cemetery grants, which uh, the town has received in the past. Latest one was in twenty eighteen. So this is uh, five thousand dollars, but this is a request. For the Board of Selectmen to authorize the first selectman to execute the application and the contract should, should the grant come through as we expect.
So Greg just read the resolution. We, we'll put this in the minutes. We mow the grass. We uh, we, we don't, we don't touch the tombstones, but we uh.
Right. Minor repairs and um, removing briars and things like that.
Right.
Any question? Public Works will handle the work.
Any questions?
This one, uh, we do this anyway, right? I mean, we go out and mow the grass and so forth with or without the grant.
I'd have to, I refer to Tiger on that.
Yes, we do, but this will help uh, enhance our, our service. We're only able to go off cutting once or twice a year basically for the holidays. And this will allow us to do a, a cutting before and after. So it's spring cleanup and fall cleanup and then we'll take care of the middle.
Right. I, I would say this enhances the work the Public Works Department does on routine basis.
Okay. Thanks for that. I couldn't hear Tiger at all, but I, I, I got, thank Greg. That's fine.
Yeah, we actually do the street side cemeteries, those that are.
So there is a, there is a resolution that is in your.
We can dispense with the reading. We have, we have it. We can dispense with the reading. We have we have it in front of us.
It's important that uh we get it into the minutes so Claudia can give me a certified minutes that goes the resolution.
Move, we add this to the minutes and we uh I move with, I moved the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. That brings us to uh the Board of Education, Dr. Lussi. Nine, when were we supposed to start? What are after? Sorry for the delay, folks.
Thank you, sir.
I thought we were dispensing with these.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
Always a pleasure.
I heard you had the budget on your uh tablets as well.
Yes, we do. Oh. We'll do it Tuesday. Yep. We'll do it Tuesday.
So Tucker for the presentation, the best way is to go to the Zoom meeting?
Yep.
Brief moment if you want.
Hey, we have fifteen minutes.
Any questions?
There's your slogan.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Want to introduce your compatriots for the record for the Channel seventy-nine.
Can't tell from the back of our heads. Just give me one moment.
Good to see some Board of Education members here.
As that logs itself in, good morning. Good morning, Kevin. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Kevin.
Thank you for the the opportunity to be with you this morning and couple extra minutes never hurts. So thank you for that as well. I am thrilled to say we've got a number of board members, members with us here this morning. Uh first and foremost, we have Dan Bennett is our Board of Education Chair. And also Bill Hogan, our Chris without and Katrina Parkhill. And I think, oh, and Penny over there as well and Penny Russian. So thank you all for coming and being a part of the presentation this morning. Of course, I'm joined as well by Sean O'Keefe here to my right, who is our Director of Finance and Operations. And to his right is Dan Clark, who is our Manager of Operations, uh Facilities, et cetera, across the district. So we are, we are thrilled to be here with you. We have been working through this budget for quite some time. And as we've done in the past, if it's all right with you, I have a presentation that'll I'll walk us through and I'll move pretty quickly. Um the and we'll get into the operating costs a little bit and talk about those pieces and then we'll shift to capital after that. That's all.
Although since the Board of Selectmen really has nothing to say about your operating budget, um we will focus mainly on capital, but we we look forward to the overview that um you passed your budget the other night.
Perfect. Yes, we um the Board of Ed adopted the budget as its own on Monday night, which we were excited about. So after quite a bit of of conversation and thinking, et cetera. So and that's all part of what what we'll walk through now. I can let's see, get into Zoom. It's funny, I was much better with Zoom a year ago when we were using it every day. There we go. All right. Then we'll we'll dive right into it. So on Monday night, the Board of Education adopted the superintendent's proposed budget as its own after um significant conversation and uh evaluation and discussion, which I'll get into in a moment. The the Board of Ed, as you know, is nine members. Um you see them there and I've got to say the as nine members of a volunteer board, they're probably some of the hardest working people in the district. Uh I heard mentioned that Wavine is the crown jewel of the district and I imagine that um most people feel that way. I will just say that I believe our school system is the crown jewel of the district. So I guess we have a big crown.
You're the tiara.
Yeah. We have a lot to be proud of and what a great place to be. That's right. Um so as as such, you know, we're we're here proudly sharing this budget with you and look forward to the discussion that I know we'll have afterwards. Of course, uh the budget is a result of um significant effort on the part of many, many people. Our district administrators who you see below uh really guide that work at the at the highest level, but it really is a top-down, bottom-up approach that we've used annually. Yeah, I know you've heard me talk about this before. But the ideas in the budget and the the leverage points that we identify and this the initiatives that we we invest in really come from from our staff, from our principals, from our teachers, from those who are closest to the work. Because we do believe the decisions about the work are best made at the level at which the work is done. Um sometimes we are the ones who have to make the the hard decisions, but we never do it without consultation from our our principals, our teachers and those those working each and every day on on our students and communities and families behalf.
Yeah, I would know. I I attended your workshop in December and it was really quite impressive to see all the input you get from the the separate principals and administrators. So
That's right. Thank you. Yeah. And that's the culmination of about two months prior, you know, preparing and thinking and and we want to make sure that we we are talking about everything that we'll be talking about together here tonight. So thank you. And so that that budget workshop that you mentioned back in December sort of kicks off the formal process that we have. Uh and in that workshop, we had again our administrators, our our Board of Education members, others that were there, first selectman was there. Uh and we get down in the um we talk about programs, we get into the operations, we get into the programs, we talk about what's going on in our district and where those investments, the highest leverage investments are uh apparent for us as we go into the year. We don't do a dollar and cents analysis at that point. Uh because we really believe first and foremost that it's our our mission and our responsibility to develop a budget that is responsive to the needs of our kids and our system first. And that's where we start. Uh and then we continue doing the work um uh to develop the actual budget numbers and everything that you have here. There are months I mentioned that go in before that. We start actually in October with our budget process internally where we lay out the the calendar and the schedule and the meetings and then we're meeting with principals and teachers around all kinds of uh different initiatives and ideas prior to it getting to that point. Then on the ninth, there was a presentation of the Board of Ed, uh then a couple of presentations with the P T Cs and elementary presentation the next morning and then the morning after that, one for the middle and high school. So that's an opportunity for parents to to learn a bit about the budget and provide some feedback and ask some questions. And some good questions came this year. The and then we had, we added this year a budget workshop on the eighteenth, which was actually was over three and a half hour discussion together with the board, the administration and others really answering questions. There were over a hundred questions submitted going in and being able to uh talk together about how the budget works, what are the what do the numbers represent? Because as you know, and we've talked again about this often, a budget is so much more than a spreadsheet. The budget really does represent our aspirational goals for our school district. So here we are on page two, which is a great sign. So now with the instead of the superintendent's proposed, we have the Board of Ed's proposed budget and um we're here for on our first conversation. And we know, I know that your timetable is always compressed. Uh you do quite a bit in a week, a week and a half or two weeks and that with that focus on capital. So I didn't keep in here all of the times, Kevin. I expect you and I to probably be texting or talking to each other back and forth in between. Uh but that's always part of the process and then next week we'll be finalizing that. And then we go to the Board of Finance and then the Town Council after that. So our process, which really begins formally in December, wraps up in the be at the beginning of April as we work through all of this. And we do feel very comfortable that the process sufficiently vets all of what's in the budget and hopefully it's a way that we can continue to teach people and communicate our mission, vision, values and goals for for our students and our and our schools. In order to focus on that, we really do always lead with the goals that we have for our um for our school system and there are five overarching goals that have been in place for quite some time. These five goals really being consistent really helps us to maintain our focus on what's the true north of our school system. You know, where are we going? What do we believe? And it's the it's always says it's in no particular order, but I think the first is the most important in a way because that's all about student learning outcomes. Right? So it's student learning outcomes, it's communication. It is teacher quality and exceptional uh professional practice. It is safe, healthy school climates and school environments. And then it's good stewardship of all of the district resources that we are responsible for. And underneath these five overarching goals, we annually develop and revise um indicators and sort of sub-goals, right, indicators of progress. And those goals really do inform the work that goes on throughout the district. Of course, there's other work that goes on all the time. But this helps us to really be consistent in our continuous improvement efforts and focus on children. One of the goals that we've had for quite some time and this year we were able to implement was our our shifting of school start times. And you know, in in a short five years, we went from concept to reality. Um but it was, it really has been an excellent effort on behalf of everybody involved. And we're very proud of the results. So far, the the feedback we've gotten from students, from staff, from the parents across the board has been positive. And uh you know, I think the what the best way to sum it up that I've heard without having uh the sort of quantitative data, qualitative, uh it's someone told me the other day that it's at the high school, it takes the edge off the morning and they feel like their their high schooler is a human being in the morning before going to school versus rushing out the door each and every day and feeling harried and you know, thing you can just picture the papers falling out the bag, whatever. So that that half an hour shift for the high school from seven thirty to eight, that seems to have made quite a positive difference. The elementary schools, having them lined up at eight forty has been very helpful both for our staff, for our teachers, our kids, but also for our professional development opportunities and the work we anticipated being able to do. Sax at fi at nine fifteen, we'd love to shave some time off of that and we're keeping a close eye on it. Um but it certainly is aligned with what we've done in the past with our East and West. We started at nine oh five and ended at nine at uh three thirty-five. So it's a ten-minute shift, but um we don't think it's significant. Um I've been meeting with our new teachers across the board as well at each of the schools and asking them what they think about it because they came in fresh. They didn't know what was before and sort of coming in new. And the feedback has been um positive across the board from that. Now, I don't know if they tell me if it wasn't, but I'd like to think they would. So uh that's it's an investment that we made as a town, the Board of Education prioritized and uh and it's yielding the results that we had anticipated as far as we can tell at this point. We do plan to do a more quantitative evaluation uh in the next couple of months. We just want to get more, a few more months under our belt, probably get out of the winter months and then do and a um get set a questionnaire out around the same time that we did a few years ago so that we have some baseline data to compare against. So we're looking forward to doing that soon too. The um of course, we continually invest in our athletics across the board. Uh it's our high school program. Some people ask sometimes, you know, do we have middle school programs and things? And as you know, it's the those are all town-driven and town-organized. For us, we pick them up in ninth grade and work through the high school. Um but a couple of highlights, of course, if Kevin, you and I were there and Nick, you were at the Turkey Bowl as well. Uh our football team had another spectacular year, winning the Turkey Bowl and the state championship. Um equally important, I believe, for uh for many. Uh the but beyond that, we also have had great success with our field hockey, with our our boys golf, our girls golf is just jogger and uh and throughout the F C A C and the state, just unbelievable players. And as you'll see in our uh performing arts as well, one of the highlights here is the fact that our team sports perform so well and the other students individually also perform very well, right? And that that proves true in our uh visual and performing arts as well. You know, we we work hard to make sure that the investment in our V P A program provides a rich experience for every child that wants to be involved. And some quick examples of that are the in our visual arts. You know, this is, it's amazing to to witness the quality of the work that our students are performing. And we are getting recognition even beyond this past year. We received three gold keys, three silver keys and two honorable mention awards in our Scholastic Art Awards, you know, up at uh at the high school. There's we have, we have students with exhibits over at Sacred Heart. Of course, the Glass House is a great partner for us. You know, and other places there. And even in film, our film festival, we we have award winners who are creating and developing uh unique films, original films uh at our school, at our high school through our program.
And we hope to do that with our Dunning Stadium uh press box improvement that would give people the opportunity for sports broadcasting experience. So that's going to be hopefully.
That's right. Yep. And that's um on the horizon. We're excited about that. And actually, one of the films that the Planetarium Fundraising Group used, a couple of them were developed by students, former
We're going to get a separate report about the planetarium later on when we get to capital, okay?
Sarah Schubert is here as well. Yep, glad, you know, I'm always glad to talk about that. The uh so awards in our um music for sure, students in orchestra band and chorus, um different recognition here in Connecticut and nationally. And also in theater, you know, winning, there's a symbol called Halo Awards where some of the judges will come to a show randomly and they'll they'll watch and score and then folks gather up in Waterbury typically for those awards. So you don't know until you're you're there and they're announcing the different uh award winners. And our theater program continues to uh to just inspire. I mean, this, this is a quick shot from the back at the new sax auditorium. This is our um lower division play that happened and there are over one hundred children on that stage all at once. That's it was the folks that are in front of the curtain and it's another group of eighty or so students behind the curtain doing all the other work. And it's really a community effort and how um it's great to see, you know, as you know, the disruption the last couple of years was was tough on programs and experiences like this for kids. So to see them all coming back and getting involved and being a part of the of the program is really inspiring.
Is one of your predecessors used to say we want to be Athens and Sparta.
I almost said that. I remember that well. Yep, that's and we do, we keep that that focus. We absolutely do. Yep. Another way that our investment is used on behalf of children is uh to make sure that we provide student opportunities for those even beyond the visual performing arts and the and athletics. Our student clubs, they continue to be developed and they'll we'll have a club for a short period of time. And if those students graduate and there's not interest in continuing it, it might sunset and others, but we want to make sure that every student has an opportunity to get engaged with our school and our school community outside of the typical school day. And that really is a guiding ethic that we have. We hit well over eighty-five percent, eighty-eight percent participation in school when you start to sort of roll all of this together for for kids. And it's everything from a group that might meet once uh or twice a month to do certain things like a cryptocurrency club, they're involved and they're just learning together about cryptocurrency and having those discussions. Um to like an esports club where they're getting together on a regular basis and playing you know, esports, which is becoming bigger and bigger across the uh across the state, across the country. Uh the you know, some of the programs also we've invested in through the years, such as Model U N has really been become um an important instruct educational experience for students in that they um we now have a sophomore simulation that's a school-wide simulation for all sophomores in the high school run by the juniors and seniors in the Model U N club where they have an opportunity to experience uh the whole thing. So the some of them just sort of come up based on student interest and when the students who are interested in crypto graduate, if nobody else is, that club may sunset. Others, we we invest in and almost consider an academic sport. Uh and we have coaches and they travel and everything else around that. So very proud of all that. And of course, many of these groups are volunteer charity groups that really are invested in helping the community.
We met the other day with the uh town players and I think they mentioned there's a mental health club.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. Uh it may not be on this list, but um I wouldn't be surprised by that at all, you know, in these.
Okay, I would, you know, I think you're aware, we're going to have a production of Ordinary People in February, March, focusing on mental health and the uh there'll be a fundraiser for one one production to raise twenty-five thousand dollars for the Nakua program. So uh it I would encourage everybody to go to see Ordinary People, but also many people will get invitations to go to the fundraiser. So
Yeah, yep, they are. They've been great partners with that. And that my and Kua because I'm always accused of using uh acronyms too often. That's a new cane and urgent assessment.
And Kua?
Okay. Yep. Yeah. And these clubs are generally supervisor led by our staff. Right? So it's not just great for the kids to be involved in doing this and connecting with school this way, but it's a way for them to get to know their teacher outside of the classroom environment, which we know leads to um you have better relationships. Of course, uh we're talking about return on investment here a little bit and I have to spend a minute or two talking about the the academic return on our investment because we are a school system. And it's been strong through these past few years and it continues to be uh strong. All districts you know, right, work our way through the disruption of the last few years. But as we've come through that, we see that our smart But as we've come through that, we see that our smart and balanced assessment, which are assessments given to all students, grades three through eight. In English, language arts and mathematics, when you aggregate those scores, we're at the the top of the state in the Derg, which is our demographic reference group. You can, of course, we can drill down all the way and in the school system, we drill into it as student by student and. Assess and make plans and put it put together. You know, student learning plans across the board, but just at a grade level because. Aggregating is one thing, but when you look across the grade level, you know, again, you still see consistent high. High results across the board for students in English, Spanish arts and in math. And that is, that's the really excellent work of our deputy superintendent, Dr. Corente. Her staff, our all the principals and our instructional leaders across the board. You know, these, this is an investment that we make, these results don't just happen. The N G S S is our science assessment, next generation science standards. And similarly, our students perform very well. There is a high school assessment there, but it wasn't, I didn't have the the results in time. So we we work our way through. And again, assessment results like this, they're a snapshot in time. It's how students felt and did on that one day that they did the assessment. For us, it's a data point, it's it's certainly not the sole data point. Probably not in a lot of ways, not even the most important one. It's really the ongoing formative assessments we use with kids as we see what they know and can are able to do in any content area. Identify plans and and help them to strengthen their skill set. Over time, as I mentioned, our students have performed very well. Bit of a bump, you know, we there was no assessment in twenty twenty. That was the whenever it was closed, but you see that we have consistently remained strong. And the S A T at the high school. Strong results, wherein, as you know, very the most competitive group of schools in the state and and arguably beyond. So our S A T results, there are, there are. The landscape around the S A T has changed a little bit around the college's use of it. And optional versus mandatory and things like that. So we're we're learning as much as we can to understand this as clearly as we can and continuing to to do our work. Now, there's statewide recognition is wonderful and. You know, we we use niche, I've talked to you about niche in the past, I won't won't go all the way back through it. But twenty twenty three results again place us very, very well across the state and across the country. They've positioned us as, you know, you'd see number two all across the board, number one, Westport. Was that number one spot? And for the last couple of years, we sort of jockeyed with them for the number one and two. Now, there's one hundred sixty nine districts in Connecticut, as you, you know, as for for context. But if you look below the national recognition, I think is quite powerful as well. Where out of ten thousand seven hundred fifty one school districts in the United States. They ranked the New Canaan Public Schools as number twenty one. Keep going down there, you'd look at districts with best teachers, best places to teach. And best school districts for student athletes. I mean, when you're talking about a data set as large as ten, eleven, twelve thousand school districts. You know, to be in the top twenty five is is quite impressive. And that's something we're proud of. But I still don't like ranking systems. Another data point that I think is important to consider, of course, like, so I'm talking about return on investment. What is that investment? What are we talking about? The. We've talked for a couple of years about the net current expenditures per pupil, this N C E P. The the state calculates this, it's on their website, it's used by them to determine. The amount of per pupil expenditures in order to calculate. The special education excess cost grant reimbursement amounts. I know that's a mouthful, but people ask often, is this reliable? Is this valid? What does it mean? It is, it's both of those things because the state goes to great pains to normalize the numbers. Prior to count giving out this calculation. And they have to do that because it it does. Determine the amount of excess cost grant reimbursement for high cost special ed students. So it's this number times four point five. That gives you a threshold for of eligibility for reimbursement for high cost special education students. So this this number is painstakingly developed by the state. Because it's used for such an important purpose and they spend about a hundred eighty million dollars per year on that reimbursement across the state. Now it is, it's. Tiered in that the net current expenditure sets the floor. But once you hit the number. You the reimbursement is on the full cost. But it's never been at a hundred percent, it typically runs at about seventy two percent. So if we have a student that's a hundred thousand dollars to to educate. Would be eligible for this excess cost grant reimbursement and we might get seventy two thousand dollars back. And that seventy two thousand dollars comes to the town. And if we have a cost overrun in this item, we're able to access that money. And if not, it's it's booked as a revenue in the town and whatever's left there is, and that's been a great agreement for us.
But it's continuing to decrease, right?
We're managing it very closely. The trend on the out placements is a little over five percent, just in unbalance. The year to year budget may go up about fifty thousand.
How many out placements do we have?
Out placements typically run fourteen sixteen. And then there's, but there are two pieces that are rolled up into that number, it's the out placements and it's the. The mandated settlements that we have.
And so you know whether the wealth rank on on that is. The the grand list only, or is it is, how do they measure that?
So I'd have, I'd have to go into it to make sure, but it's. The Anglic itself adjusted equalized net grand list per capita. So there is the calculation around, it's probably grand list in town size.
Grand list per capita, so if you're larger like Greenwich and similar size, you're gonna be number one. But.
Right.
Okay.
We, yeah, we hover right around there, you know, and actually been Greenwich has always been. Number one, as long as we've been looking at this. And the same kind of top, top four or so have been there between Astoria and Westport. Yep. And so the. In educational parlance, the Anglic is ability to pay and the net current expenditure is willingness to pay, right? But we don't think of it that way. We think of it around responsible. And that use of the resources that we have. Now, I will, when I go to the Board of Finance, I'll actually have a little bit more of a longitudinal look at this. Because what you'll see is that we back seven, eight years ago, we were hovering around thirty, thirty two, as you see. And what you see is the, it's very hard to move the needle on this. Because we all have the same drivers for the most part, right? Our eighty two percent of our budget is salary and benefits and the others are transportation and out of district placements and some. Some of those big drivers that we have in our budgets. This is a result of really careful work in our operating costs and managing those down. Thanks to Dan, Sean now, Joanne before and others between. Big and little things like managing the electricity with the solar panels, the C H P, flipping over to natural gas and I'll get in that a bit. But it is, you know, combination of factors. For instance, I mentioned the excess cost grant reimbursement. The in our budget, we budget gross of that number, right? So if it's gonna be a four million dollar number, we we budget the whole four million dollars. Just about every other district actually budgets net. So they'll bring it down by a million dollars or so in their in the Board of Ed budget in anticipation of the excess cost grant reimbursement.
So does that mean the state statistics are skewed that way because because we do it differently?
Yep, it means that our number is a little bit higher in that regard. Because of the way that we do it. So I wouldn't say, well. You know, they equalize as best they can without having. You know, accountants that go through everybody. We choose to do it that way, we choose to spend that little bit more per pupil.
So which way would it go if we did it the same way?
It would go down a little bit more.
It would go down more.
We'd have, our budget would be a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
By about a million bucks, yep.
That's an accounting change.
Yeah, I mean, that's, those are the, those are the decisions, but 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 I wouldn't want to make the change. Because the way that we've done it has worked very, very well. And we started doing it, you know, when I started about nine years ago. In that the, you know, we anticipate our actual costs. And if, because of the volatility in this account, what happens in many districts is when they budget net. If they have something they didn't anticipate in the budget, they freeze everything else in order to try to accommodate that. And we've really, we've not felt that that was the right way to run a school district. About for our kids, so what we do is we budget the gross, we anticipate that number, we work very hard to develop it and. And we work to stay within it. But if there is something that happens beyond our control. It doesn't ripple throughout the rest of the budget, we're able to access that, those resources when the time comes. So that and that's been a great partnership through the years. I always recommend to my my colleagues, they should do the same thing. But it's it's that first step in getting that that jump in the budget, that's the hardest. So some of the ways that we've saved through the years, I mean, it's again, does, as I mentioned, doesn't just happen. We've really focused on printing and lowering costs and paper and paper consumption. And I know that's not obvious tonight as we all have our big binders or today with everything that we have. But but we do, and so we centralized the printing, I know we've talked about this through the years. And while our goal, of course, is a hundred percent of the printing running through there. We're we're doing very well, we've been trending up more and more of our overall printing is running through the print shop at the high school. And that really drives down costs, you know, in the operating side. The more we can centralize that printing, the the more we can save on the day to day use of the the, whether it's paper and waste and. The machines themselves and what have you. The new staff that I've been talking to, as I mentioned, they are, they pretty universally said how grateful they were for that print shop as well. So it's not just, it's one of those things that doesn't just save us a little bit of money, it actually has become a real resource for teachers.
Only in the high school?
No. No, each school and because we have. Our van drivers who are doing the mail as they're going from building to building. They bring it, so it can be, you can send it at night and in the morning it'll show up in your mailbox. Yeah, and they wrap it, put it in there and it's ready to go.
But the facility itself is in the high school or?
Facility, I'm sorry, is in the high school.
Right.
Yeah, it's in the base downstairs at the high school. And they've got a few high capacity printers that can do color, they can, you know, hole punch, do all the kinds of things that they need to do. And yeah, it shows up and they can send the documented as PDF virtually. Send it in remotely, it queues up and they get it right to them.
So does that mean there's not printers locally or there's?
We've cut down on it.
You control the.
So we have some copiers, but we've cut down on them.
I didn't mean printers, I meant copiers.
Yep, we have some copiers, we've cut down on them, we've really removed many of the individual printers. So you print to copier instead of having all the individual printers around.
Right.
And then for the big jobs, you send them to the copy, copy shop.
I meant printers, actually, because people. Print from their computer, yeah.
Right, and those, you know, those are one, some of the highest per page costs, the individual printer. So you you bend that down by getting rid of the printers and printing copiers and then you bend that down even further by sending it to the print shop. Yeah. The, we've talked about in sourcing, right? So whether it's in our maintenance, bringing in. HVAC and plumbers, electricians, carpenters, others. Or in our special education area where we've brought in our occupational therapists, physical therapists, our B C B As, which are. In special education behavior analysts. And instead of having to outsource this, by bringing them on board, they learn who we are, they provide a higher, I think, higher quality service. And they're also, it's cost effective. And then, you know, I know I've mentioned it every year, but you can't lose sight of the fact. We are one of the few districts that runs a special education transportation system. And that system alone saves us. More money than I would care to guess. I had a conversation with a colleague not too long ago where she was telling me. One student, one outplacement, a hundred twenty five thousand dollars a year. Just for one. And there's some districts that have sixty seven. You know, so you start to look at what you're talking about with some of these numbers and. Having it in house, and it doesn't just serve our special education students out of district. As I said, it's the preschool is a part of that, so our preschool students. And then they can do work for us like in between, like delivering the mail from building to building. Or sometimes our drivers will work as supervisory aides in cafeterias and other places where we need some extra help and support. It may not be a full time job, but we need somebody for four hours in the middle of the day, two hours. If it works in their schedule and we can pull it off, we we shift them over to that role. And that's worked very well, as a matter of fact, we've had one driver who is a retired teacher. He drives for us in the morning and then he helps us in the math center throughout the afternoon at the high school and he drives later in the afternoon. And even coaches for us sometimes. So this is the the added value above and beyond the monetary savings that you get by by doing.
All the drivers are full time and then they can be shifted around.
Exactly. Yep, yeah, because you really, you couldn't staff it if you only pay them in the morning and afternoon, so you pay them the day. And they. They earn it.
If they want to drive, forget about, they could drive seniors too, so.
I'll let you know if we have excess capacity. Yep. But it's really a great system and, you know, you know, Roy Walder is the the master of it all, thank God for Roy. Both the school start times and our our drivers here. We've also, and this has been a great partnership with the town in doing so, are. Our work in folk really implementing environmentally friendly cost saving opportunities on the operation side. So again, the natural gas, we just, we've got our propane in over at West now. And getting ready to make the final connection there. So none of our buildings are being heated by oil. Burns cleaner can save us a little bit of money. The solar that exists now on four of our five buildings and the high schools project, high school project as well is underway. They haven't started yet, but they're doing the planning and the timing and getting that all figured out, but we'll have that in the next couple of months. That'll be up and running. We've been talking about load balancing and what a difference that makes again with a million square feet or so. Just making sure that everything isn't turning on at the same time to spike your power. Makes a big difference overall in your cost trends. We do that. The the CoGen plant over at Saks is done and running. So we're getting some timing around that and you'll see in our budget that not in this year, but in the twenty four, twenty five year, we're looking at putting C H P at the high school. And then we've been working for years on the LED lighting retrofit. Which, as I mentioned, you know, I've done it at my house and it saved me about, you know, fifteen cents a month or whatever it might be. You do it on a million square feet, save you a few hundred thousand. Yeah, so it's made a significant difference. And we've done that through. On bill financing through the years, so it's been at zero percent rate in order to get all that work done. And with incentives.
Big incentives, up to fifty percent.
Yep, so you know, the outcomes, the inputs. And now the future. And so when we think about the twenty three, twenty four budget. You know, it's really looking to balance our communities. Appropriate expectations of excellence in the school system. And our long term focus on efficiency. In order to continue to provide the world class educational experience that we have. It is this balance when I talking, sometimes you you have a great view of an organization when you talk to folks who are only in about six months. You know, instead of the teachers that have been here sixteen years, just to get their sense. And many of them had experience, whether student teacher or otherwise in other districts. And to a person, they spoke to the community's value of education. The school culture in the building that they're in and the collaborative and collegial environment around the. The high school, they spoke also about how the students, how polite, respectful the students are across the board, which was wonderful to hear. You know, I often say when I was there, I would go into classes and substitute. For for teachers from time to time and just help out or just drop in when I was the principal of the high school. And I was amazed, students, as they left the room would thank you. They say thank you to their teachers on their way out the door. Seems like in the, you know, in in our world, that's a normal, natural thing to do. Kids don't do that, but they do here because of that relationship they have and the connection they have with our schools. It's really, really special.
Can I tell the story of Frank the other, that I mean, the other day about his son saying, this is the best teacher I've ever had. He was, he was in New York City at a private school and they moved to New Canaan, so he, I mean, it's just really kind of amazing.
Yeah, and I think Frank.
I see my, I have five grandchildren, four grandchildren in this public schools in Greenwich and and the relationship that young kids have with their teachers are amazing, so.
Isn't it amazing? Yeah, it really is, it's a special bond, it really is. And I I also, I tell a story, when I first came out of college down in Clemson. I started substitute teaching, there were no jobs around back then. And so we were, I was subbing and I spent a day in a third grade classroom. And it's still to this day is one of the most difficult days of my entire life. And I swore off the elementary school then and there forever, because it just.
I I read a book to Mrs. Jaeger's third grade at South last week.
Yes.
And it is a rambunctious age.
Yeah. I know my strengths and I I know others. I, there's a special place for everyone who who does that work with with kids and we've got some of the best. Yep. Yep, so continuing. Our investments in what makes the New Canaan Public Schools the the special place that they are. So. My my next slide is not a good slide, but it's sort of just meant to get us into the budget itself a little bit. And to show a little bit of of trend now, it's still, we said this last year, we say it again. Trend is difficult when you go back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty one because of the disruption we've all experienced, right? Twenty, last year was more normalized and I think that. We're all optimistic that going from this year, you know, into next year. We're we're not going to see that kind of disruption. There's still absences and other things that we're accounting for and I'll get into that in a little bit and some of the initiatives. But you see the overall change year to year. And this is page twenty eight in your budget book itself and we'll get there in a minute, I just, I'll break it out a couple of ways.
You actually underspent your budget quite a bit last year because of a lot of factors that were still carryover from COVID.
That's right.
And those, those are gonna normalize now and come back.
That's right. That's what we anticipate, right, that old trend back in. Yep. And so the. Yeah, the breakdown. Because, you know, as you know, we compare against this current year going into next, so we do our projections each year. Where we use our experience and the trending and different accounts and any changes that have occurred since we built the budget. To make our our best estimates on where we think each account line by line. To make our, our best estimates on where we think each account line by line will end. And then we roll those up into the projections, which, you know, we've, we started doing that years ago as well, because we really felt a budget to budget comparison just isn't nearly as accurate because you, you're really comparing a budget that you developed a year and a half ago. To one that, and that you'll implement, you know, in the future. So the projections are done November, December in order to give us, um, those targets to work against. So it's where we anticipate the budget will land. Our budgets always in Connecticut, they're categorized into eight objects. And I've mentioned before, and this is just, I'll move quickly through a couple of these. The salary and benefits are over eighty-two percent of the overall budget. You throw in their purchase services, uh, which is another significant percentage, and that's our transportations in there, which is a, one of our larger spends, of course. Out of district placements, and then you get everything else. So it all really is a couple of drivers that, uh, that make up a district budget overall. Breaking that out a little bit, I think it's just a little clearer than that other slide. Uh, you'll see that our the change year to year for seven of the eight objects of above, that's our salaries. Through other objects and then fees, of course, is the revenue that we bring in. So moving the employee benefits account out, it's about a three point five, three point four nine year to year. Again, really driven by the salaries. And then the benefits themselves add in, uh, that eighteen point one million. That's all in on the benefits for that total of four point eight four percent. Year to year increase.
So these are all categories that you report to the state. So these are all kept. So if we were looking to compare ourselves on a benchmark basis with these categories with Darian and Wilton and?
Yeah, you want to take, go a little deeper than that, just to make sure it is normalized. For instance, there's, you'll see a jump in our, um, which one, not equivalent, which one, not, not a jump. But in contracted services, you see we have a three point five nine percent increase there. Those are interns that we're looking to bring in. So it would otherwise have been in the salary line under subs. So we're bringing that in. So you just would want to do that a little bit before you. But, but yes, those are, those eight objects are state. Chart, charter counts. And beyond the, the objects, another way to look at it is by cost center. And so this next slide just does that. And we do this annually, just to take a look at our three elementary schools and Saks and the high school. It's really sort of that equalization, the balance of funding. Um, we want to make sure that the, the three elementary schools are on par and they are. What drives any variation there really is the experience level of the staff. You know, if you've got a staff that's more experienced, you're going to pay a little bit more in the salary line overall. This is total budget. This is not a delta year to year.
Also the number of students. I mean, they're not all equal. South is the heaviest.
East.
East is the, is the largest.
Yep. East is our largest and, and south, and then south and then west. And then west, you roll in the preschool class, right? Which is really in special ed. So the, uh, the high school and the, and the middle school are about the same spend and they are about the same size. This, and one of the reasons they are about the same spend is because this does pull out athletics and pulls out VPA. So, you know, if that was all part of the high school in this analysis, it would, that would be a little bit bigger. And you see curriculum instruction, you see special education, which is about on par with Saks and the high school. Uh, and that's the K twelve effort. So that's all of our staff and all of the, the work that we do. And again, you can see across the board. So it's, we pull the benefits out and you see that it's its own item there. Otherwise, it would be an analysis person by person and the, the insurance costs and we, that would just a lot of work for no return. So. The single biggest driver in our budget, as I mentioned, is the biggest number salaries and what drives our salaries is our enrollment. So the.
Hey, hey Brian, can you remind me when, uh, CBA is, uh, is up?
Well, our, um, teachers have another year and then we go into negotiations. So they've got two more years in there.
You got multiple CBAs.
Well, that's why I paused a little bit because we've got six, right?
The big one.
The big ones, the teachers, right? So they're in year one of, uh, of the three. So next year we'll go into negotiations with them. Uh, we finished negotiations this summer with the administrators. And, uh, so that's our certified and then our non-certs where the, you know, our mirror negotiations. The, as you know, the certified, you cannot uh, run without a contract, right? But in our non-certs, we've sort of the pandemic and the, uh, affordable care tax, both of those challenges is have thrown things off cycle a little bit. So we're currently in negotiations with our, uh, teaching assistants, our custodians, our technicians, our technicians. And, uh, the others are somewhere on their, their three-year cycle.
Thank you.
Yep. The. So looking back on enrollment, this is just, this is quick historical look going back to twenty twelve, thirteen, and then looking forward, you see our, our highest year was sixteen seventeen at forty-two ten. We're currently running at forty-one hundred. And that's, those are our suits. So we've really, we've been pretty tight as far as the variance in our, in our stat, our students across the board. And we've adjusted our staffing accordingly, based on our class size guidelines and our students' needs. As you look forward, uh, you see we've got, it starts here with a forty-one hundred and twenty-two, twenty-three. Little bit of a dip is projected into next year. And then if you trend that out, you look and see if these numbers were to hold true. Back, you know, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we get back to the highest where we were in, um, sixteen seventeen and then an upward trend. That would lead us to be, um, four, five hundred students higher by the thirty-two, thirty-three school year. Now, you know, when I've talked about projections, I've always been very careful to say they're most accurate in the out years. The further out you go, the more variability there is. One of the challenges that the board and the administration are discussing and working through is the projection, the anticipation that we will have an increase in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year of about a hundred twenty-five kindergarteners. And then that, the anticipation that that would remain consistent going forward at those levels. The challenge there, the only, the reason I flag it is because those are based, that numbers are based on known births. So what they do essentially, they look at how many students were born in Connecticut to residents of New Canaan that are registered with the health department. They get that number and they have a factor that they trended out over forty years, looking at, you know, what some districts go down based from the birth. So if you had a hundred births. And you typically had ninety kindergarteners, you know, you would be, you were trending down, that'd be less than one. We trend up usually about one point four, one point five, depending upon, you know, the year and things. So they've done this analysis for us. So looking at the number of known births with, which is over two hundred, they're anticipating that our total enrollment will be over four hundred.
But in our case, you know, and also Darian and Greenwich and Westport, I mean, the, uh, turnover of houses was extraordinary.
Right. Right. So that, that they call in migration.
In migration.
Yeah, a couple of different things they look at. They look at the births. And then what they look to do is sort of trend, here's the births, five years later, here the number of kids that enroll in kindergarten. And then that delta is the in migration or out migration that they consider. And so, you know, anecdotally, I agree. Certainly we've seen that, right? We've seen an increase in the turnover of the houses, which could lead to higher in migration than we've had traditionally and a higher number. Which is one of the reasons why this is something that we're taking a deep dive and, and looking at carefully. We are bringing on another demographer to do an analysis for us, the one that, uh, has been working over in Westport for a little while. And, um, we'll see what their results.
Actually survey families. I mean, do, do, do we, uh, try to get actual data?
You know, we do when they register. So when, when they'll register a kindergartner, we ask them about younger siblings and things like that. When we've done quite a bit this year in promoting our kindergarten registration, I think we've done actually a very good job in, in getting people, uh, signed up and ready. So right now, if the trend continues, um, we'll be over our projection next year in kindergarten. So we're looking at it. We don't know if we've just had a better job advertising and brought more people in. It's earlier than they typically would come in, or if it just, if it's indicative of a larger pool that we're pulling from, that's something we'll wait to see. You know, we're keeping an eye on it certainly.
What's our fall off from eighth grade to private schools that don't go to the high school?
It's really not much. Um, let me see if I have the the school by school. I don't think I do. Um, what happens, sometimes students will go to somewhere for private school in the middle school and then come back for the high school.
That's what my son did.
Are we still running at like twenty percent rate for private schools?
Twenty or less. Yeah. Yeah, we are. Um, I haven't seen a lot of fluctuation in that number. If the economy takes a turn, we will, like we did, I think in oh eight, oh nine, where we saw people coming out of the private schools, coming back to the public. Yeah, but we tend to be pretty consistent there.
I think Greenwich is like thirty percent in private and. Yeah, yeah.
And it's not in Kansas.
We have a better school system.
That's why we have so much pressure on our real estate mark. It's a value.
An investment.
Private tuition.
I've had that conversation with multiple people.
Right.
Yep, I have. And, uh, they're now enrolled in our schools. So, um, so that bump, we're keeping an eye on it. We're going to triangulate it. We'll take it, take a deep dive, take a look at it. Um, I think one of the, one of our cha, one of the reasons this is a challenge is we never, we didn't drop a significant number when this, many towns were, we're going through negative enrollment and they were declining. We stayed pretty steady through those years. So now if we're going to jump up as a result, we're coming off, we're starting from a higher base. So we'll see. So the, um, I have worked hard to not get to the problem solving stage of that discussion. Until we get more data to triangulate it and become more confident in it. So when that time comes, you'll certainly know. Those were the, the aggregate numbers. You break it out a little bit. And again, you see that bump in twenty-six, twenty-seven that, you know, that we're, we're looking at. But beyond that, you know, you see consistency over the next couple of years, right? And that's in our, our elementary, middle and high. And it's our elementary that are really, uh, most driven by the class size guidelines and it's, which the sixteen to twenty in grades K three. And then twenty to twenty-four in grades four through eight. As we look, so we, we look at those, the elementary numbers the most. The high school, there's more variability based on the course and the program and, you know, what they're doing. So you see the elementary numbers there above and then the, the others below. And just another way to, to look at that data set. And again, that balance between the middle school and the high school and the elementary. So, you know, I mentioned enrollment is our main driver and as a result, you would hope and expect that our, our most, um, significant investment in staffing is our classroom teachers and it clearly is. So we see the classroom teachers are the majority, teaching assistants are the next, and they are hands-on with kids all day as well. And then our specials teachers, which are the, uh, you know, PE, art, music, what have you. So well over, you know, sixty percent of our staffing investment goes to people who are with children each and every day, um, shaping that experience and working with them. And we all have a role, of course. Whether it's our campus monitors or greeting them in the morning, our drivers that are, are transporting them back and forth, our folks in the cafeteria, the custodians, everybody is a part of the, um, you know, the culture in the school. But the most significant chunk of our investment, uh, certainly between those three and our student support services. All of those together really forward-facing, I guess I would say with kids each and every day.
One thing I didn't understand at the workshop was the innovation group. So how, how large is that? Are they under administrators or?
So it's one. Yep. It's, uh, the, there's one director of innovation. Who's working to infuse it in our science program and our CTE program and other places. Yes. And that was somebody, so it was a really a shift in position. She was our K eight science coordinator. And so she has now become the director of innovation, which is a K twelve position with expanded responsibilities. Yep. So we didn't backfill the K eight. She's still doing that work as well.
And that was last year's budget.
Right, right, right. And really, I mean, as should be, her work is done through the other folks right around her, like our director of digital learning and our, um, manager of, uh, digital technology services, like the folks who are supporting the technology in those pieces.
Is it mainly focused on that kind of thing, kind of new ways of teaching through technology?
It is. Yeah. There's committees, a committee that's been meeting for about a year and a half now. Uh, and it really is thinking about how do we infuse these practices into the classroom experience for kids. Uh, it's, yeah, it's ma, having a positive impact, making a difference. And with the planetarium coming online, um, we hope and expect there'll be more opportunity there. So as far as staffing goes, um, with the budget does look to, uh, add three point one FTE in classroom teachers. And I'll break that down in a moment. And then appoint, there's a specials teachers and the administrators. So this is a director of the preschool position. So right now, as you know, the preschool's over at West. Uh, we are the only school district around that doesn't have a full-time, a director in that position. Most of them are full-time. We're looking at halftime to begin because we haven't had it yet. So we want to shape it and make sure it's, it's appropriate. It's actually not, it's not in the budget. It's, we're going to be funding it out of our IDEA grant. So it'll be a grant-funded position. But I think I wanted to bring it to your attention because it is a new position. Uh, and what that will do is we, right now, the elementary special ed supervisor, who's Bob Rousseau, uh, oversees the preschool and then also the special ed program in all three of our elementary schools. So this will allow him to transition out of the preschool, really be onsite at those three schools as we need. And have somebody with a, a true preschool background, running that program, working through that program. And, you know, as you know, that's a program now about fifty students. Uh, and we do think there, there's potential there for maybe even more, but we would never get there without making an investment like this. So.
Is that all special education, fifty?
No, it's fifty fifty. So what happens is, uh, the state mandates that we run a program for students when they come out of birth to three until they enter kindergarten. So it's that three, four, five. And, uh, they also ask us and expect us to be fifty fifty. So you have fifty percent students receiving special education services and fifty percent what they call typical students who don't receive services. Uh, it's a great, it's a great, um, environment for all kids, to be honest. And, you know, both of my, my girls.
Fifty percent that are not special ed, are they, do they pay tuition?
They do. Yep. They do pay tuition and that goes as a fee, as an offset towards the program. Um, it's still one of the best deals you'll, you'll ever find. Um, we're probably a little bit below market on that tuition. But, and that's where I say, I think there's some opportunity there. But we'd really want somebody to be running that program for us too. And really, who really knows preschools. And again, Bob knows it, has done a great job and Jan Murphy has helped out an amazing amount, the principal of it.
So what, is it twos and threes, fours?
It is. So it's, it's typically three, four, five. Cause it picks up after birth to three.
Right.
So it's not a pre, it's not a daycare. The instructional period. And our teachers there are all certified. Yep. And, uh, it was at South years ago, moved over to West, uh, with enrollment shifts. And you know, when I talk about opportunity, we're also looking at if this, um, new reality in a few years is going to come to pass, it doesn't just impact our kindergarten enrollment. It may very well impact our, our preschool enrollment as well. Because, you know, the, if the percentage remains consistent, the base number goes up, you're going to have more special ed kids, more kids that need services. And so, and you want to bring in the typical. So every one you look to bring in, you'd have two.
And the fifty percent is not necessarily west school oriented, uh, what geographically, it's.
Oh no, it's district-wide. Absolutely. Yep. And so you've, and it's a, a self-contained, isolated program that runs over there. You know, they have, they have the resources, of course, they can.
Do they get transportation?
They do. The, uh, special education students, if they need it.
Well, but, but the other fifty. So they have to be delivered by the family. That's what happened with preschool. Okay.
Yeah. Yep. And so that was one of the ancillary considerations when we changed our school start times, right? What's the right time for preschool to start? And how do we manage to make that, make sure it still works for families that need it?
Right.
You know, I think so.
So they start all year?
They, yep. Adjust a little bit. Yep. Did, did a great job. And then, um, you know, you see us coming down a little bit in some spots, going up a little bit. We have, uh, in the budget proposal, we're looking at an addition of one campus monitor. I'll get into that right here. So the, on the non-certified side, the one campus monitor addition. As you know, we have nine campus monitors right now, one at each elementary, three at the middle and three at the high school. And what we're looking to do is add a tent, which would take the position at the high school where our, um, director of, or supervisor of, or lead campus monitor, we call him, uh, is working to free him up so that he can do other work, security, uh, specific work for the district. He would be able to go around, check protocols, check buildings, do training with staff, work more closely with the principals. Uh, and be involved on a district level. And this is role and then what we expect him to do is the lead campus monitor, but being sort of housed in one building doesn't permit him to be onsite the way that we want him to be.
How have we avoided the Darian conversation on this?
Yeah, our system has been in place, right? So we, because of the work that we did beginning ten years ago or so. Um, when we brought in the campus monitor program, the, you know, these, the campus monitors generally are retired law enforcement. They've been, uh, through the years, we've gotten, we've refined the system more and more. And we've been investing in, I think, both the professional learning and the technology and the appropriate kind of strategies to protect the schools in the right ways. So, um, I, if we had nothing, I think that we may be in a conversation that dissimilar, but because we have such a great base to begin with, and we've got our, you know, the years that the crisis advisory board has been meeting, the partnership with the town boards. I will be scheduling an executive session or requesting, I guess, an executive session to talk about technology with Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, not technology, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and Town Council, talk about security. It's technology-related security, but security measures. Uh, and there is a grant that we anticipate. It's technology related security, but security measures. Uh, and there is a grant that we anticipate being um. It's been announced but being articulated in the next couple of days. So once that grant is out, we have a proposal in hand. And we'll be setting up opportunities to, to meet with each of the groups and talk about making that investment.
Maybe we're gonna do it as one executive session for all three bodies to get it.
I'd love that.
Yeah, save your time.
Uh, thank you.
I, I would just say that the, the Board of Education has met in executive session a couple of times over the past several months on security. And um, the crisis advisory board came and presented to us at a public meeting and then also. An executive session. And I think there were some follow ups that um, Dr. Lutzy is uh indicating are going to be future discussion in front of you and the other town bodies.
Is, is I understand that Leon's got six armed. Security officers.
I don't know the details.
That's what the paper said.
Okay.
At a, at a six hundred and thirty one thousand dollars spend, all in, including three hundred to, for the director.
Okay. Okay. We've um, you know, our approach, which again started back right after Sandy Hook, to be, to be frank. We, I think it was a thoughtful approach that has served us well and will continue to. The um, you know, the campus monitors, they become part of, part of the schools, right? Part of the culture of the school. They get to know the kids and the families. They're there. They love the work that they're doing. And we talk about retired police officers, sometimes they're in their forties. Right? So it's not, yeah, these are. People who are engaged and are there, are here with us because they want to be, because they want to be with kids.
But you, you think the system works and.
I do.
Obviously, we can have upgrades here and there, but generally the system can sit in places.
I'm very confident in the system that we have.
That's great to hear.
And what this is looking to do is simply to uh provide that opportunity and capacity for the lead monitor. To be um, out and about and checking with protocols and doing some training and partnering with principals around. Further enhancements.
So do they work eight hour days, seven hour days?
They do. Typically, it's eight.
Yeah.
Uh, and then they'll also be there for meetings and other things. Sometimes they're on weekends. They're, they're around a lot. As you know, you know, schools are um. Our schools are very active places, very busy places. And yet we. Want to make sure we're always keeping an eye on the, on the envelope of the building, right? So even on weekends, if the. If there's a group using our building and they don't have somebody else that's who's going to be sitting at the door to do that work and to check people in and out and whatever, then we'll, we'll require them to hire one of our campus.
Well, you know, we're lucky too that we have three schools, two of the biggest schools and, and South, you know, all. Pretty much part of a campus.
That's right.
Which I think helps, helps.
Oh, it does. And that's where the SROs come in. I mean, this, you know, I don't, we'll, we'll certainly talk in executive session and go through even more details, but the uh, the work around with our partnership with the P D. The SROs between the one at Saks, the one at the high school, and the one who's uh floating between the three elementary schools, all of the, the close partnership with them, the availability there and uh, yeah. The work that they do, it's. I'm confident in the system that we have and the people that we have. Um, and this is just the next, the next step in that. Yep.
And I think the additional SRO that's been this past year at the elementary schools has been very positively received. And seems to be working really well. So I think that was an update that the Board of Education received. From the district and from the um, the police department. And I think that was uh, it seems to be working very well, which is, uh, which is a really positive thing.
Yep. And a, for example of why it's so valuable, I just received pictures yesterday morning of that SRO at the East Science Fair. The night before showing kids how they do forensics. But you know, the, the, when I talk about being invested in the culture and involved embedded, that's, that's what we're talking. So there's kids there, he's there, he's, and they're, they're learning together, right? And it's on his own time and volunteer to do, and he's there because he wants to be.
I saw, I saw the news this morning where the Newport News superintendent was fired. I can't imagine a six year old kid with a gun, just astounding.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's the reality of.
It is.
What America, so.
Yep. And that's where. You do, we do what we need to do on the security side.
Hmm.
And we can always consider and invest in our school climate and culture to make sure that every child, every adult feels comfortable. Telling us any concerns they have coming forward, if there's any, any reason to do so. And we train annually and more frequently than that on response. Yep. But it's a challenge, challenging.
Hmm.
Yep. So um. Couple of other. Investments. One is uh something we're calling a classroom coach. So what um, we're seeing and part of this probably is the challenges that students experienced over the last couple of years. They didn't necessarily have the preschool experience or even the, the early experience, the consistency that they, they had in the past. Uh, we also have seen that, you know, some staff that are brand new to the district, if they just came out of their student teaching. It was not a traditional or typical student teaching experience in many ways. Um, certainly if they're on Zoom trying to learn how to student teach, that's very different than being in a classroom. And even the, the disruption that many school districts experienced where, you know, the unanticipated closings that were happening all around us and things like that, we fortunately were able to avoid. Um, but all of that has led to an environment where we, we want to uh invest in a position called a coach, classroom coach. As somebody who can um, work with teachers around the skill set required to establish. A, a school community that's, that works for everybody.
Just one, one position?
One position across the three elementary schools. Uh, it came if, after conversations with our principals who were talking to their teachers and, and I've been talking with the union about this as well. Uh, the original was to look for three. And he said, well, let's start with one and see and get a sense of it. But the idea here is we're likely promote from within, you know, hire somebody from within to do this role, be as a teaching role, a teacher on special assignment. Uh, and give them an opportunity to work with um classrooms, teachers, kids, families. If and when there are some sort of behavioral struggles in a classroom to help get things back on track. Uh, it's. Hopefully something we invest in that works well and maybe in a few years we don't need. But uh, right now we're, we see the need for it. It should really be.
So this is a coach to assist teachers.
Yes, right. Yeah. And that's the, the bulk of the work will be that. There'll also be an opportunity to work individually with kids here and there. But um, most of it's about sort of teaching them to fish instead of fishing for them, right? So working with teachers um. And, and whole, you know, whole school, it's also.
Some teachers didn't get it as they came through the.
The experience has been different.
Right.
Right. I mean, it would have to be, given the um, the disruption that we've experienced. And uh, and you know, kids are coming with, with different sets of needs than we, we've, we're accustomed to. Um, so we want to have a resource that was really researching, learning and teaching and sharing and. We, it's, it is the teachers and coaching with teachers, but our teaching assistants have a big impact on the classroom environments and that kind of work. And there's opportunities there as well.
I know, I know that there's been uh, in Connecticut, a problem with an increase in absenteeism. Do we have that here?
You know, the um. With, you mean the faculty, right? With.
I was gonna talk about the kids, actually, because I, I saw, I read someplace that it almost doubled, I think.
Yeah, we don't have that. I'm not, we're not seeing that. We're not seeing a big increase in um chronic absenteeism or anything else. Um. We are though struggling to bring in people to cover substitutes. So we really have a hard time with substitutes. And uh, and as all districts are, we just. People aren't taking the jobs like they used to. And our uh, teaching assistants, we're still looking to hire a couple of those.
Are we having issues getting teachers? Forget substitutes, but just hiring teachers?
We're fully staffed on the certified side.
Right.
Yeah. So there, we're, we're in good shape. And that was part of my, my meeting with the new teachers to find out what's worked well, what should we do more of, what, maybe did we think would work that didn't? So we can continually find the best ways to onboard people and to, to be in, remain in attractive place for people to come.
What's the biggest challenge for the district in today from COVID that's continuing or?
For the district on the district side, operationally, it's the substitute problem. It's the covering classes. So what happens, if somebody's out and we don't have a, a person to cover that class. The, it ripples throughout the school. So we have to pull from other, other places to bring an adult in the room to do that work. So we. We're bringing in, we might pull a TA out of uh, one period and then somebody else for another. And so that rip can ripple in those ways. We're trying to address that a little bit with some building, full time building substitutes. That are in the budget. Um. But that's. Right. And our interns as well are gonna hopefully help us with that. So we're, we're trying to solve that problem. We anticipate this, we experienced it in COVID. We thought by now we would be in the tail end of that disruption. Um, we also, in truth, I mean, when, if somebody is sick, they're going to be out, right? So we still, if somebody has the flu, they're out five days. If they have COVID, they're out five or more. And so there are still more absences just overall because of illness.
I think that's true throughout.
Yeah.
The world, throughout America. I mean, I think that people, people are taking calls more seriously than they did. Ruddy nose, you know, throat, whatever. I think, I think people just stay at home and, you know.
Yeah. And you know, and send lots and lots of roles and jobs that you can do that here and there. For us, we, we need a replacement. We need somebody to be in front of those kids. Um, and so that's, that's been a bit of a challenge. And. You know, I guess in the, in the classroom side, classroom by classroom, you know, we just, we're continuing to do our work around um. With ruler and emotional intelligence, um, social emotional work, um, to help students to um. To regulate, right? So we're seeing a little more dysregulation than we're used to. And I think. Again, that will, will continue to work through that, but I think the disruption caused some of that. And let's be on, disruption lost other experiences that, that people had. Yeah. Yep. So that's our, our thinking around the classroom coach. Last year, we introduced the new Canaan Literacy Academy. Um, and so we're looking to continue our, our investment there. This new Canaan Literacy Academy, as uh, again, I'm sure you remember. It's working at the K two level primarily. It's working with our, our students who are struggling the most with their reading. And uh, and using a scientifically based approach, the Orton Gillingham approach, which actually. Is, is training that we're doing district wide with all of our general ed teachers and our special ed teachers and everybody. And these are some students who, who need some extra intensive work to help get them on track. Because we do believe and we've seen it, that if we can do this at this level now with these guys, it will change the trajectory of their, of their education and their lives. Um, so it's really, again, high leverage investment here. Um. It's early, but we did want to share some data. We'll continue to do this. And actually, in our next Board of Ed meeting, there'll be an update on the Literacy Academy that'll take a deeper dive. But I did ask Bill Tasber, our assistant superintendent, to collect some data and he was able to pull this together. So the students that have been involved and it has, it's been. You know, when you say fourteen, fifteen, up to twenty, I believe. Um. The blue is where they came in, the red is where they were in November as of twenty two. And again, this is uh, some students may be in this for the whole arc of K two. Others would go in for a period of time, get that intensive work and then transition back out. Uh, but we see, you know, positive results there and positive results here as well. Around decoding. And again, the Orton Gillingham approach and the approach we've used as a district has been a scientifically based approach from the start. I know there's some conversation about balanced literacy and the, you know, the reading wars and all of those pieces. One of the advantages to our, for our district, having always developed our own programs and curriculum. Is we have been able to cherry pick from the best of different programs to develop our own. So we've had a phonemic based approach for many years. We use decodable texts. We, you know, it's, we look at comprehension and we look at fluency. We have um. Worked hard to, when we sit, use the term balanced literacy, we're not using it the way the um. That it's used externally. What we're saying is we're balancing the phonics and the decoding and the um. Phon- phonological awareness with the comprehension, uh, et cetera. So it's um. This is a, a significant focus in the state right now. And uh, we are, the state is actually. Looking to require all school districts in the state to use one of six programs that they've approved. Uh, as what they call the curriculum. We don't call a program a curriculum. Uh, those are two very different things. And so we're, we're putting in a waiver for that. Because we believe that the results, well, first, the results speak for themselves. But secondly, the program that we have is, we believe head and shoulders above any that you would just pull off a shelf. Because we've developed and refined it for, you know, for the last decade. So we're, and again, the results being strongest in the state should. Speak for themselves. Yep. We're doing that work. But the new Canaan Literacy Academy, uh, what we're looking to do is, so we started with one. And we have that fellow last year, remember I was talking about the Orton O G fellow that we had? And how fortunate we were to have that person. Well, since then, she's been training our general ed staff, our special ed staff. She's been involved in developing this. And she's very much a part of all of the work that we're doing. As a matter of fact, in the next couple of months, she'll be speaking up in Newton, Mass at a conference around literacy. Um. And she has been uh, key and a key partner in, in helping to develop this. So this next year. We're looking at moving one of the cost, the cost of one of the teacher into it, the I D E A grant, which is the national grant for special education costs. And well, there's one additional special ed teacher in the budget to continue to develop this. Ultimately, there'll be one more additional teacher in the budget next year that we'll be requesting, given if, as we. Assuming that the program evaluation goes well with the Board of Ed next week, or next two weeks. Um, and we uh, so far, the results have been very positive. And again, getting the support to kids at this age, at this level has been important. And then finally, we mentioned the campus security and our um. Campus monitors. Now, the, the campus monitor here, he, he. Gave me a little bit of a hard time for using his picture, but I said, but it's, it's perfect. It's perfect. Because it shows you have a sense of humor and you're connecting with, with the community. And yet, right behind you. Is the screen showing the cameras and that you are vigilantly monitoring the entire site. So that's what we look for. Oh, and finally, the building substitutes. Um. There are. There's a building substitute to the elementary levels, two at Saks and one at the high school built into the budget. And our building subs, we hire certified teachers to do that work. And what's happened over the, of the last couple of years, since we started this, um, those teachers have been available to step in when we have come mid-range absences. So if you have a teacher with the flu who's going to be out five days, we'll put a building substitute in there so that the students don't lose instruction. They're able to keep pace with what should be happening versus having a different person each day trying to interpret lesson plans. Um, sometimes we'll have folks that something happens in their lives, they might be out for a couple of weeks. We try to use the building sub there. Then as teachers retire, if the T, if the subs are, if they are people that we'd like to hire, we also have a bench to, to pull from, to bring people on board. Um, if they, if they meet our standard.
How many absences do you have on, on average?
It really varies.
Up and down. Flu season versus.
Well, we are, right? So January, February is the, some of the highest months typically because of flu season and because of where we are. Um. Depends on the building and the time. It's, it's tricky. You know, you can have seven, eight, ten in an elementary.
What really, what number stresses you? Ten?
Well, our system is stressed when we're more than a handful, to be honest with you, right now, because of the shortage of subs.
Handful being three or four.
Yeah, right, yeah. Now, Saks is different because the upper lower division, high school a little bit different.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna kind of throw numbers out there, but there's been days we've had thirty people out. At what, at the middle school. Yeah. And so, you know, how do you cover that without just, without it rippling throughout the system? So we're actively engaged in problem solving that. Yeah.
What do you need to be a substitute teacher? You'd be certified?
Not certified. Nope. So our building subs are certified because we want, you know, because of the role that they play. To be a substitute teacher for us, um, college grad. Um, certainly there's an application process, a background check and, you know, all of those different.
I mean, there might be moms and dads out there that, you know. Kids who've gotten older and they might want to. Get into a classroom environment and, you know, just if you're having that.
And I would just encourage them not to be put off by the application. Because I know we do, you know, we still, we want people, we need people.
Is that online?
We must have quality control regardless. Yes, it is. It is. Yep. So as long as they can persevere through the application, we can pick them up after that.
Let the word go forth.
Yeah.
You said, you said it's the biggest problem that you've got.
It is. Yeah. Because of the way that it, it impacts across the board.
Right.
Yep. 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 So um. Our employee benefits, just tried, wanted to bring some um. A little more, it's a gross, a big number, you know, when you kind of roll it all up into the budget line. So try to break that out a little bit. And we can speak more um specifically as we get into the budget book. This is right off of page ninety two. You know, in the book, what you'll see is that our anticipated claims are really trending very well. Um. We're, we're looking next year at really just about a hundred thousand dollar increase year to year in our anticipated claims. But we do have a gap that we have to make up. And that was the, the funding gap of about one point three million. Uh, the. Deposit's about the same. Then the other big driver here is the stop loss premium amount. So over the last couple of years, we've gotten back well over four million dollars in stop loss because of a few high claimants. And we've been paying, as you can see, um, anywhere from seven hundred and twenty thousand or so to one point four million. So we've been paying significantly less than that. So we're going to hit the market and I, I think that we have, it's, it's safe to say that there are folks that are coming off the plan. That um, should help us, make us a little more competitive in, in negotiating this. But at the end of the day, the, our current carrier has um. Contract with us where they will do it again in the future at a, a maximum fifty percent increase year to year. So. This plans for um, just about that because we have to make sure that we, this is the individual stop loss number. So that's really, that's seven hundred and twenty three thousand's a big jump there. We, it does anticipate using the savings of three hundred and sixteen thousand. We've had a, we started the year with a couple of, of pretty good months and just uh. Were able to roll that into the twenty four budget to bring down the total, total request a little bit. So. That's sort of how that all, all rolls together. It's right in the budget book ninety two and the, the narrative prior to the I S F description is very helpful as well in understanding. The. Salaries and benefits. Across the top, just those two numbers alone, if you were to roll those up, those would account for four point nine percent. So if we had no, nothing else in our budget but salary and benefits, um, we. we'd be asking for a four point nine percent increase. The rest actually trend down a little bit, which brings us to the four eight four. So on balance, the other six objects are actually trending. You know, you've got a little bit up, a little bit down, but but we're managing them very carefully.
Page fifty two and fifty three, the same, the dupe.
Of the presentation of the budget.
Of the budget highlights.
So the other budget highlights.
You have two slides. I think they're identical.
Yeah, you know, one of the one may be hidden here, so I apologize, but you can see, I think we've touched on those budget highlights, but I can just check real quick. Do you have it there? Can I take a look at yours? It's actually different.
It is because you've got
Yeah.
shot clocks for the gym.
Right. So in the first one, page fifty two, there's a couple of the the drivers. The PSAT cybersecurity investment, the the change in outplacement number. So you see some of those, those are some of the drivers within the items on page fifty two. You see that?
If they're primarily.
Everything's exactly, exactly the same except for the first.
Okay.
PSAT.
Got it. Okay.
On on fifth, page fifty two and page fifty three, shot clocks for the gym.
I apologize. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. There is another slide. I won't put you through it.
We get, we get the picture.
You got it.
We'll leave the numbers to the board of finance.
Deal.
The shot clock just went.
Can we move to capital?
That's right. Shot clock just hit. Yep. And we can move to capital. Because it's what it's time to do. So as you know, the, we tend to, I tend to talk a lot about the operating budget because that is our year to year spend. But we also do need to spend some time with capital because that's our our stewardship of the resources I mentioned. We've got about a million square feet of space, four thousand one hundred kids, another, another seven hundred and seventy or so staff. You know, the entire community, and it's more than just what happens from bell to bell, right? Our schools are used all the time, very, very busy plants in an area. So why don't we dive right into it? First is facilities capital, which is, you know, when we talk about capital, that's really what we think about the most. And then the other two, two spends, which I'm happy to get into. And again, I have Dan and Sean both here. I can, I'll hit a couple of highlights if that makes sense. But and I'm of course glad to talk about anything, anything in particular. One of the the investments that we're looking to make this year in capital is that facilities assessment. About eight years ago, we did one. We're looking to do it again because, you know, they have a shelf life. And so what that would do over the summer, we'd have a group coming in to really do a detailed assessment of all of our, all of our mechanicals and our building, our roofing systems, everything that we have. And then help us to make recommendations over the next ten years for the next ten year plan. Rolled into that number also is a a mandate from the state where we have to do an HVAC evaluation once every five years. And the first one has to be done before the end of the calendar year twenty three. So we thought, since somebody's going to be doing this assessment anyway, we'll also include that HVAC assessment so that we get, we get that feedback as well. That's, it's something that, you know, you'd love to say you do every ten years, but as you get into the out years of a ten year plan, you know, it's less informative. So we think this is the right year to bring them in. I think it's year, would be year eight or nine since we did it before.
Who does that?
An architectural firm. In the past, we've used Silver Petrocelli. And certainly they would be considered for the, for this one too. Did a great job for us. Yep. At at each of the schools, you'll see the painting remains consistent. The exterior PA systems are a request at our, oh, I didn't change this. It's a new request at our K eight schools. And what that's for is it's really, again, a security idea so that we can use the PA to communicate with folks who are out of the building as well. If it all works well, we'll look at the high school, which would be the most expensive because of the size of the of the plant. We began a floor replacement system program last year. We're looking to continue that in a couple of different spots. And another update that's hitting just about all the elementary schools and middle school is updating the fire alarm system. Those have been in for a while. So the the functionality will be improved in a couple of different ways by doing that. And it's really a two phase approach. Because you have the first, you do the panel and you do some of the heads. And then the next year you go back and you replace all the rest of the heads and get it communicated back. The boilers. Worth talking about a little bit. As you'll recall, last year, we budgeted to replace boilers at the three elementary schools. And we, we had the numbers, we went out to the street and it was significantly higher than our projections had said, in part because the projections were based on an older style of boiler before we had the natural gas coming through. So now with the natural gas, we're able to put in condensing boilers, which are a different material, much more efficient. And will save us a lot more money in the long run. But we were under budgeted in last year's capital. So with with the help of the finance, the town finance department, we did some transferring. Move some money over to east so that we can get that done this year. And then we need to make south and west hole so that we can can do that work this next summer. And then all all those schools, the three elementaries and Saks will be running on condensing boilers, which are state of the art, high efficiency, quiet, clean. The right investment to make. So the the amount needed is on each of the, in south and over at west.
So on the, so on the big ticket items in the out years, I see west roof. Saks roof, which for some reason is a spread over three fiscal years.
Right. That's the the building itself, the size of the project.
It's just so big.
We just, for budgeting purposes and thinking about it, in the high school, we had that split over two.
Yeah.
And actually made the decision, let's just get it done. We may make the same decision when the time comes. We want to do the assessment first this year, which will help us, help inform us on that too.
I mean, doing starting the Saks project and doing West would be a big, just together, it would be
It would be.
two pretty, pretty large items.
Right. So we we can look and see, you know, when we get the assessment done, which one is more, is is West more urgent or Saks more urgent? And then have that conversation.
On the PA system, I assume that's would be considered security?
It is.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, and we would be, whatever grant comes out, that would be a part of it. Right. Yep. Yep. And so, and it's a little different. So over at Saks, the PA, it's surprising to me to learn that we didn't already have this. We're looking both to upgrade it, but also to bifurcate it so that you can do an upper division announcement or a lower division announcement. Right now, it's all school. So you've got your fifth and sixth, then one part of the building, seventh, eighth and another. And it's not split out where you can talk to the lower or the upper division alone. So it's, it's not a big number, but it's one of those functional things that'll be helpful for us. Yep. Of the, again, the boilers, the floors. The
Ask, what has been the average spend? Capital budget for the school system over the last three to five years? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, ballpark it. So it's it's challenging because we have been doing roofs lately, which has been very helpful. The high school roof was a big, big number. Dan, I don't know if you have the the number off the top of your head, but I I recall training anywhere from about three and a half to about seven. Is my, is my recollection. Yeah. And the seven would be when you're, you've got a high school roof in there or whatever it might be. There's some things in here like the, some outdoor parking lot work that generally we put in here as a, we need to get this done. And then Tiger and his group will take it out of our budget and and get that done for us. So this, the number can adjust that way. And that's typically between now and, you know, the end, next week, when we're, as we talk. I think Kathleen.
Just a question. On any of these capital requests, or maybe even ones that don't show up on this list, was any opportunity to use ARPA funds to address some of these capital requests?
So our, our ARPA fund requirements are a little bit different. You know, they give us five categories of spend that we're able to use it for. And it's really around student, it's tutoring, it's student remediation and student programming. It's much more restricted.
Okay.
And unless
Operating or so no, no capital?
Yeah, it's really not, not capital. If we were to do an HVAC overhaul, a significant HVAC overhaul, that may may have qualified, but really, it's, it's intention is to supplement the budget sort of by adding in some new resources for kids and families.
How much, how much did you guys get?
About a million. Yep. So things like our, we began a summer academy for students in the summer that provided transportation and programming for students who didn't otherwise have it over the summer. We've hired a psychologist, social workers. We've done, you know, those, those kinds of initiatives with a, with a million dollars or so. And it's a million over three years. So we're able to use it next year as well.
Thank you.
Was that helpful? Okay. Yeah. And we have a presentation that we shared with the Board of Education a few meetings back. I'd be glad to share. But the you know, the both the amount and the restrictions on the, on the expenditure is, you know, limiting and focused. But, yep. Let's see. So, you know, it's sort of, again, those, those themes, as you see, the couple of other things that had a couple of buildings, the need to refurbish the floors in the gyms. You know, our, over at South, they're using that every single day, as you can imagine. Over at Saks, we use the gym as an overflow for the cafeteria for the last couple of years, just to spread people out. So we didn't have the whole class in one space together. So the tables on that floor have kind of done a number. And then over at the high school, the auxiliary gym, same, same kind of thing that Jim has used. The, whether tables being dragged across it and chairs and different things. So those three, that's, those are summer projects that we would look to do.
On the parking lot, Reno.
Yep.
At Saks, I mean, that's always been kind of a dog's breakfast.
Yeah.
Is that going to be completely new design, new, new model?
No, that's really flipping out the, the concrete curbs that are crumbling and pieces like that and and really just repaving. It's, it's a landlocked space. It's a challenge. So I mean, we'll, we'll work with Tiger again. That's one of those ones where we put it in as a placeholder a little bit.
Yeah.
Just to signal, hey, you know, we've got to, got to take a look at this. And, you know, again, three hundred seventy five thousand, it seems like a big number. But when you start to look at the granite and the paving and the size of the lot and and what it takes, it'll be, it'll be phased. Most likely. We've been doing the high school last couple of years. And it's really, really turned out well. Looks great.
How's the fundraising going for the planetarium?
Well, you save the best for last, right? So the so as you'll recall, we came in last year with a request on Planetarium. It's a public private partnership. The number was adjusted a little bit along the way. But good, a good base to begin. So the group has been working tirelessly since, really, since that moment, that minute, the minute the money was approved and the, and the project was a go. So the fundraising, we've, they've hit a little bit over eighty percent. They've matched the town's contribution or or very, very closely. And and so this, the funding that I'm requesting in the budget here sort of closes that last gap, makes us whole and gets this thing going. You know, we've, because of the lead times, we've had, we've broken the project into two phases. We've ordered the first phase, which is great because that, and that's the aluminum and that's the longest lead time items. So we are poised to to make the next phase, make make that commitment to the next phase. Once we hit, hit the number. There was a change in the number that we initially had because of the size of the project and prevailing wage costs and a couple of things. So it did move up a little bit more than we we had anticipated. But the fundraising group led by Sarah, a few members of the Board of Ed, a couple of others has been tirelessly doing this work. And it's just incredibly proud of where they are. To to the town made the three hundred fifty thousand dollar investment last year. They fundraised and matched that amount. And so what I'd love to say, to see is for us to say, we'll carry it, we'll carry the baton for that last little bit and make this happen.
So it's nine hundred, nine hundred thousand overall?
It's about it. It's eight and change.
So three fifty, three fifty.
That would be nine overall, right? So so when we built this in December, they weren't at eighty percent. So they weren't, they hadn't made, they weren't at eighty percent. So the, to be able to sit and say that they've matched it down, two weeks ago, I couldn't have said what I just said.
Oh, I, I
I got a call.
Good.
I think Mrs. Williams wrote a check, but
So they've met their, they've met their entire fundraising goal?
Well, no, no. I mean, our goal is, of course, to be a hundred percent funded. But they're closing, well, they've reached the eighty percent threshold. And what I, what I'm requesting is that we we take the rest off their hands. And we meet that goal in the, with this budget. Does that make sense?
No, I'm not following.
Okay. So what we need is about, let's say, we need about eight, eight and change, right?
Eight, right.
And the town put in three fifty.
Three fifty.
Okay. And as of my most recent conversation with Sarah and the group, they've matched the town fund, so seven. So I still need another one hundred fifty to complete the project. And that's what I'm requesting in the budget. Although I came in at two hundred because when I built this budget, it was two hundred. And that's the good work that they're continuing to do. And I think that
So that's going to be one fifty.
Well, it says two hundred here.
She said, when I did the budget, they didn't, they hadn't gotten funds from the
This is, this is Planetarium.
Private part of the
Every day.
Every day. And so the number has changed. We've had a beautiful alumni gift, twenty thousand dollars.
That's right.
Wow. So the, but the Planetarium here is two hundred thousand. So you, it's going to reduce to one fifty in the budget?
That can safely be reduced to one fifty and still get that project done. Yep.
Very good.
Yep. And all the credit in the world to Sarah and the committee and and the work that they're doing in the community for their generosity and understanding the really transformational value of this project. I think this is the, I talk about high leverage things in the operating budget. This as the, the potential for transformation of experience for kids in this is, is astounding. I mean, it's, and again, it's not just sitting and observing other people's content. It's creating their own and showing it to their kids, their friends, their peers, their teachers. We've already, we've been hard at work already developing assured experiences for kids across the board, you know, K twelve. And you mentioned our campus with the three schools. I mean, to have it right there where all of Saks can just walk over and South as well, it's, it's spectacular. And we're also building the infrastructure to be sure the community can rent it out, that we can use it on nights and weekends and other times. And that's where, you know, the ongoing investment in the programming is so important. Because you want to make sure, you know, a piece of hardware is as good as the software that you run. So you want to make sure you have high interest programs for both kids and the community. We're excited about that. And the the communities really come together between the found, the community foundation, others, I mean, the list goes on and on. And actually, the renovatethedome.com website has so much information and has really stunning visuals about the potential of the space. So I would encourage anyone to take a look at that too.
Why don't we leave the technology for Mr. Lavierian company?
Great.
So you're experts on that.
Sure thing. Well, we could leave the vans for Mr. Carl as well.
That's right.
He's an expert there. But yeah, it's the the breakdown and there's more detail in the binder, I know. Yep. And it's a long presentation. I'm grateful for your patience.
Thank you. It's a, it's a great job.
So I've been in government for sixteen years and one of the things I'm proudest about is leading the search committee that hired you.
It's very kind.
You haven't let us down this morning, I can assure you. It's terrific, fantastic. You've talked, you know, nonstop for eighty minutes or whatever. Terrific.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're at your disposal between now and, you know, your deadline and any conversations, anything else, feel free to reach.
We're not going to make any changes. We're going to pass it on to the board of finance.
Great.
I don't think we're going to make any changes. Kathleen, are you still there? You want to make any changes?
I'm still here. I I just had a question, if I may.
Of course.
Yeah. So just, I'm on the, the switch on the school start times and, you know, the the bus usage. Have you seen a change in, in terms of what you had expected in terms of the usage of the buses? And when you look at your budget expectations when you first started the program, has any of those expectations been met? Or has there been an increase or a decrease in terms of what your plans were?
Yep. So we are continually encouraging people to take the bus. And the weather's not our, not our friend in that all the time, right? On those rainy days and things. But we are seeing utilization increase. Now, part of that is the, I think, the encouraging. It's also as we've come out of the pandemic and people are less concerned and, you know, the the buses. But we are seeing an increase in the, in the utilization a bit, which is a great sign because that helps with traffic and timing and everything else. As far as expectations, one of going into it, it actually was last spring. We negotiated a five year extension on our contract with our bus company at a two percent a year increase, which is well, which we're very grateful for, we think is a, is a very fair agreement and is significantly less than any of our peer districts as they're looking. So we've, so that helps a lot. The additional investment in the buses is we're using them. I think that was the right calculation as we've looked at our needs. One of the things we did not use, we did anticipate one point O F T E in in staffing. in, uh, in staffing because of because of concern about sharing across the district with all three elementary starting at the same time and Saks's schedule, and we wound up not needing to fill that. So that has been a, um, some, an event. It was good to have if we needed it. We didn't need it. And so we're giving that, you know, not funding that position.
Right. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all. Great excellence comes at a cost, but we have excellence and we appreciate it. So
Yeah, thank you guys, really.
Of, um, Russ times waiting, oh, a five-minute break.
Just, yeah, well, I'll take a two-minute break. Unless everyone wants, we're resuming at eleven thirty-three. We have Mr. Russ Kimes, our full-time Director of Emergency Management.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, I'm not there in person. I'm actually, uh, on vacation, uh, and also Phil Shively is on the call, the Deputy Director of Emergency Management. So thank you all. Um, hopefully the background noise is not a problem. I was able to find a place to steal away to present today. Uh, so I will bring up my screen. Are you all able to see the screen?
Uh, yeah. Yes, now.
Excellent. Okay. So, uh, for the emergency management budget request, um, come on, here we go. Emergency Management's mission is to obviously protect lives and property of the citizens in the canyon, planning and preparing for emergencies, coordinating all the towns, uh, departments, as well as non-governmental organizations in response and recovery, uh, disseminating emergency information to our public, uh, as well as coordinating upwards to the state and federal agencies, uh, as well as, um, now, uh, obviously working with FEMA, uh, for, um, public assistance grants. And, uh, we work to provide that security for the canyon residents under many different connect, uh, conditions. Obviously, everything from chemical biological to civil unrests. Unfortunately, acts of violence are sadly a reality as we see, um, across our country. Terrorism, acts of violence, power outages, uh, severe weather, which, as we know, um, severe weather only has been on the increase year over year. So accomplishing that mission, uh, we, as a department, uh, work with all of our other town departments in preparation, planning, preparedness, and then execution. Um, so this year, we had a tabletop exercise simulating a, um, sorry, leaving a lot of noise. We are simulating a, uh, severe weather event. And, uh, for that, uh, we simulated a hurricane event striking the canyon, um, with a large-scale power outage uh, as well as flooding. And, uh, what you see here is a broad representation of all the departments that attended and participated in this two-day exercise. Uh, we also work with regional emergency coordination and disaster prepar- preparation. Uh, these pictures are from actually the Region One Emergency Management and Homeland Security, uh, uh, Field Day, as we call it, where we meet and work with all of the chiefs and, uh, the urgency managers across Region One, which for those who are not aware is, uh, most of Fairfield County. We also, uh, participate in disaster preparedness. Uh, for those who are not aware, um, we, uh, have shelter supplies. We have, uh, some limited food supplies. Uh, and as you can see, uh, from this, I sort of leading, uh, leading the, uh, the jury, as it were, before we get to the budget, some of it is dated. Uh, as you can see, the, uh, the bed synthetic filler is actually from, uh, nineteen sixty-three. Uh, and these cots, uh, are actually from back when it was civil defense.
Thank you very much.
No, uh, and thankfully not. But when you need them, uh, as we say, it's not something you can buy on Amazon and get the day, you know, you have a major incident or like we had, um, became very close with Christmas, uh, this year, needing to stand up a shelter, uh, because of the extreme cold weather conditions, uh, during that power outage. We were fortunate, it was not a widespread power outage, but for those who were impacted, it was a very serious event. Um, so our operator request, uh, this year, what I'll do is, uh, obviously, the big change when you look at the operating request year over year is because it's now a full-time position. That's the the bulk of the percentage year-over-year change. Um, I'll walk through the main lines here, uh, beyond the H R, uh, items. So service contracts, uh, constitutes, uh, Everbridge, which is our emergency notification system. So whenever our residents get telephone calls, Everbridge is nine thousand of that. Uh, we have three G I S licenses, which we would use, uh, not only for our own mapping tool to know and track where roads are blocked, power lines are down, and use that coordination, uh, ever source, but also can be used, heaven forbid, if we are in a situation where we need to do an evacuation, uh, where we can share publicly a map on our website, uh, so that people would know whether they are in or out of an evacuation area. It also includes things like, um, one of the things that we do as a department is we try, we're trying to consolidate into our organization those costs that are or those items that are used across our first responder agencies. So an example would be our I D card license, uh, police, fire, EMS, all use the same salamander type I D. Um, the same also goes, uh, and I'll get to it in a second, uh, with our public safety radio, uh, infrastructure. It's used by all these teams. Um, previously, it had been largely managed by, uh, John Federico and P D, but also the costs were split between police department and fire. And we're bringing that in under emergency management so that we have that strategic focus, uh, so that we can look at the long term. Where should we be? Where are we versus our peers, not only in capability, but also expenditure? Um, and another one, uh, that falls under that service contract line is, uh, the U A C, which is the Urban Area Safety Initiative, uh, for those who participated in the T T S, which I know, uh, Kevin was there and some others, that U A C is a regional radio asset that we're, uh, a partner in with other departments across Fairfield County. And the U A C radio system allows interoperability between police, fire, and EMS, and also serves as a backup radio, uh, system for our own infrastructure, should it go down. Uh, should we have a large-scale active violence or anything like that? This is a radio system separate from our own that can be used to coordinate responses, um, and incoming units. Um, so that's U A C. And it's something we're a partner in, uh, and we share the cost with the other municipalities. Um, onsite contractors, uh, is, uh, just pulling up here, sorry, just looking here. Ossai Contractors is five thousand. O S Contractors is, uh, we're looking to get an, uh, like a retainer for an electrician, um, so that if we have a major incident, we are able to have a qualified electrician, uh, plug in. Uh, the trailered, uh, as you may or may not remember, last year, the, uh, Tiger and Bill purchased a very large, uh, I think four or five hundred kilowatt, uh, trailer system, uh, uh, generator system, and that requires a skilled electrician to be able to plug it into, whether it is the police department, fire department, um, or when wherever it ends up going. And I'll get a bit more into generators a bit, but that, uh, contractors line will be used for that as well as also, um, uh, we have had continuing problems with our public safety radio site at St. Luke's School. Uh, and Chris Kaiser just literally yesterday, uh, came with the estimate for us to get a cable modem up there, which will be about, uh, two thousand dollars a year for the drop and everything else. So, um, so that is what constitutes that budget line. Uh, training, uh, is, uh, it's flat, it's five thousand dollars. And for those who, uh, were part of the T T X, that was actually a bit more expensive. Our intention is not to do something necessarily that large of a scale, bring people in from, you know, California or international. Uh, we think that with five thousand, we can, we can manage, uh, at least our goal is to have two multi-divisional, multi-department exercises per annum, uh, and that five thousand will help to, uh, facilitate that. Uh, repairs, emergency equipment, uh, is, uh, pretty straightforward. We are, um, responsible for keeping the upkeep on state assets, uh, that have been allocated to us. Uh, those state assets include a, uh, person shelter trailer, which includes cots, uh, bedding, um, it also has, um, uh, we also have an animal shelter trailer, uh, which is that they're owned by the state of Connecticut. However, we as a part of D M S and part of this emergency, um, uh, team, region emergency planning team, they're located in, and we could use them in the event we have an emergency. We're responsible for keeping the wheels on them that, you know, that the generators that are on them are lubricated and working, et cetera. So that, uh, we also have very cool message signs, uh, so you may see the bright orange signs with the lettering and visible wording on them. Uh, there are four of those, two are owned by the state, uh, two are owned by us, uh, with as emergency management. And this is all just to go to maintaining that equipment. Uh, supplies, uh, general is, um, hosted office supplies, uh, in a very small, uh, seven hundred dollars. Um, uniforms and equipment i- is, uh, for cert team, uh, as we did last year. Um, the cert team, um, ninety-nine percent of its budget is raised, uh, or its operations are funded through donations. Um, however, for the incredible service that they provide for our community, um, starting last year, we'd like to continue with this year. Uh, we would like to have a line for them for personal protective equipment so they can operate safely, uh, as they're working with police, fire, EMS, uh, as we navigate whatever, uh, emergencies occur. Uh, that includes reflective vests, uh, rainproof jackets, uh, things of that nature. Um, equipment emergency, uh, is going to be shelter supplies, uh, as I showed you in the picture before, some of it is from nineteen sixty-eight. Probably, uh, needs some refreshing or does need refreshing. Uh, additionally, our, our limited supply of, uh, rations, we have M R Es, uh, are now well expired. Uh, and, um, you know, if we end up with a situation that first two, three, four days, uh, is going to be the most difficult if we stand up a shelter for finding food for people because not only will uh, those people who are, uh, impacted, but we should have, uh, non-perishable food items to at least get them through the first couple of days until the restaurants get power or, uh, the acne or wherever we can be able to move. It also includes, uh, some storage racks where we are in discussions with Tiger, as well as the new police building committee, two different locations, to try to find a better strategy for our supplies. Um, where our supplies are now, they're largely inaccessible in a timely manner, and it would require a lot of manpower to get him out of there. Um, so we're looking to partner hopefully with Police Building Committee or, um, their training facility ideally to find a location to be able to put all of this equipment that is kind of scattered in basements at various town buildings across, uh, uh, our town. Uh, the only one I didn't mention was O T training. And that's worth calling out because, um, obviously, my position salary in Philly is a part-time. The O T training, the intention of that is joint emergency training. Uh, and what that means is when we do our two um, multi-departmental exercises, not only internally, police, fire, and EMS, but bringing in mutual aid. Um, we want to ensure that overtime and concerns about overtime, hiring back a police off, a police lieutenant, hiring back patrolmen or sergeants to be able to participate is not an issue and that our department, because it is for cross-departmental activities for emergency preparedness and training, that we will pay for that overtime for those firefighters or police so that it never becomes a problem that 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 or an excuse to say that they cannot participate. Um, we just took, uh, basically saying with the highest pay rate, which is captain, six captains for six hours, um, which is doesn't sound like a lot of time, but it's enough that if, you know, we could get a sprinkling of police and fire paid staff to be participants of things like the tabletop exercise that we did. And, uh, in particular, when we do more hands-on training, uh, in the coming year. Uh, so that is our operating. I'll pause there.
Any questions for the operating?
None here.
Kathleen as well?
Yes, sorry, Russ. Um, on the emergency equipment, so it looks like you haven't really been spending what your budget is currently this year. Uh, tell me what you're planning on doing to make sure you fully you have, and then you have another, uh, proposed seven thousand for next year. Tell me something you got that.
Sorry, the, uh, so we have the equipment emergency, the seven thousand is going towards the shelter supplies, the M R Es, because, you know, and when Phil and I
What about, what about what you already have in the budget for this year? How you, how are you going to utilize that? That hasn't been
That is that is going to get utilized, not only with, uh, so the, we restructured, I should have mentioned, we restructured the lines of this budget. It's, um, the lines that were on in this budget had probably been the lines that were in this budget since I maybe the Jim Cole day. So we, um, rationalized and tried to put the buckets in what actually makes sense for where it is today. So the, um, equipment emergency line today is going to be used to purchase cert, um, jackets, because I'm working with Stuart Salvi to make sure we can bring apparel for them. Uh, we have a generator on the animal trailer that is desperately needing, uh, of overhaul. Uh, Phil can attest, we we brought it out, and I don't think it's probably been taken out of that thing in three years. Um, so we're not entirely sure how much money is going to be required to, uh, or if it's going to require a rebuild, uh, as well as we need to redo, probably to repack the bearings and the tires on the, uh, animal shelter trailer. So my expectation is that will be spent down.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, uh, moving on to capital. Um, so I will actually, uh, I have individual slides for the actual asks. Um, but what we have, um, I need to minimize this window because I can't see. Here we are. Uh, we have our continuing Motorola hardware and software update contract, uh, which is at a hundred thirty-six, two sixteen. Uh, we are on year three of five. Uh, this would be year three of five of that contract. That contract is what, uh, provides us our twenty-four hour support if the radio system goes down. Uh, it also provides two, uh, during the life of the five-year contract, upgrades to the software, because this is all now a, uh, computer-based system. So Motorola's software so that, uh, it is, um, not susceptible to hacking, but also, uh, compatible with whatever the latest version of the operating system that is on. Plus, it also uh, gives us a hardware update, two of them during the lifecycle. They just did the update last year, um, where they provide new switches, uh, and new boards to anything that has sunset during that time. I think we made it very clear. Previously, we weren't happy with the, uh, expense and in particular, the lack of transparency that Motorola provides. That has been, um, unanimous, that that feeling of that across our peers. Uh, unfortunately, Motorola is largely a, uh, monopoly in this domain. So even when we tried to get transparency as to what constituted this amount that they have amortized over five years, we were unable to get that. Um, however, all of our peers are doing the same thing because they're, they're the only game in town, as it were, and everyone is needs to have that equipment, not only on home support, but also upgrading it so that it does not, uh, stop working at the end of the day because it is computer-based. You think of this uh, end-of-life on your phone or your tablet, at some point, it just will no longer download updates. The same applies here for these, uh, our radio system. Uh, the replacement is the command unit is, it's the full, uh, three hundred and eighty, which I I left in here, uh, but obviously, we were going down the path of getting two hundred and fifty thousand of that, uh, through, uh, ARPA funds. And I will, uh, go to the slide. So for those who are not aware, I think we went through this. I don't know, um, Kathleen, Nick, or, uh, Kevin, if you want me to go through this in detail, but I know we just did with the ARPA request. You're good with that one. So it would be the, would be the remainder of that, which, uh, is a hundred and thirty, would be what will remain in the capital, um, to completely fund that unit. Uh, the next item is body armor, or sorry, the fuel trailer, uh, and the fuel trailer. Uh, in partnership with Tiger and Bill Osman, we did an inventory of all town generators, uh, and you'd be surprised how many there are beyond just the wastewater treatment, police, fire, and EMS, uh, public works, but there are also, um, generators to support the, uh, the, um, our wastewater movement across town, uh, as well as, uh, various other facilities, such as Irwin Vine Cottage and Wavine House, which all get used, uh, as heating and warming shelters, as well as uh, community support facilities. So that being said, we, uh, did the math, and the reality is, is if we have a large-scale power outage, I E. the entire town out of power, uh, we would not be able to move enough fuel after about day four or five to be able to keep everything running. Um, because what the highway department and Public Works have is basically they have a hundred gallon, uh, kitty tank that they put on a truck. And even them running that twenty-four seven to fuel these, all these generators would not be sufficient, uh, to keep everything running. We got lucky with Sandy because parts of the grid got brought back online and it brought some of these facilities back up. So this request is for a purchase for a Department of Transportation compliant, one thousand gallon bulk fuel trailer with a pump. Um, not only would this be useful during an emergency, but also just in general, uh, for public works, we're putting it in our emergency budget because of the fact that it's something that, uh, would be so critical for us to keeping all of our facilities running, including the new, uh, towed generator that was, uh, acquired last year. Um, so that's what the bulk fuel trailer is. Uh, Tiger, I know you're on. I don't know if you have anything else you want to add on that one, or if
I'm good, Russ.
Okay. Uh, the next item is, uh, body armor, uh, for police or EMS and fire. Um, unfortunately, as we have seen, um, the world is just, unfortunately, we're just one incident after the other. Um, so while our police are protected, um, in such an incident, right now, EMS and fire, who would be operating in an area we would call a warm zone, which is not directly where the threat is, but perhaps police have that threat, uh, pinned down in a room, and there are victims between that point and the actual ambulances, oh, waiting at the staging area. EMS and fire could potentially be in a situation where they would be going in and extracting those people who are down from that warm zone. Uh, and it is our belief that we as a town should provide them at least some modicum of safety, uh, in that capacity. Hopefully, they sit and never get used. I, I, you know, I don't like to argue for things in a budget that may never get used, but if we need them, we want our, our first responders to feel safe, to be aggressive, to save lives. Um, so this would be to, uh, to, to purchase, uh, sets for EMS and fire, uh, and it would be, uh, four sets each, or for EMS, for for fire, although I I I'm going to talk with the chiefs because it may make sense. It depends on if we want to give more EMS and fire. I I think based on the number of people on duty at any given shift, splitting it equally would be right. And that would be for one jack, a set of a jacket with what's called a ballistic plate, which would, uh, protect against high, uh, high-velocity rifle rounds, uh, as well as a ballistic helmet. Um, sort of one-size-fits-all, uh, we're any questions on that?
No, go ahead.
Moving on. Stop the leak kits. Um, so as the world has moved forward, we, I think everyone learned how to, uh, stop someone from choking. So as the world has moved forward, we, I think everyone learned how to stop someone from choking. Then the world has moved on to learn how to do CPR. And now we are pushing heavily that everyone should learn how to stop traumatic bleeding or hemorrhaging. It's the number one cause of death and traumas. And what we're proposing is to place these kits, basically every site, we have an AED in town buildings, including schools. They're $150 per kit, we want to get 28 kits. And inside of it, it includes a tourniquet, it includes gloves, it has a card for those who may not have medical training or maybe perhaps need that quick refresher, which has all of the pieces you need to stop that kind of a bleeding. So our intention is, is we want to purchase these and have them installed across not only the schools, but also the town hall, police, fire, EMS, highway department, the wastewater treatment plant, Irwin and Vine Cottage, et cetera. Phil, I don't know if there's anything else, feel free to jump in at any point. Nope, you're on mute, sir. Okay, I think that looks like he's good. Any questions on the stop the bleed kits?
Nope.
None, moving on. The last one is Motorola tri-band radios. We are pushing as a department, as emergency management, to increase interoperability, not only across our own agencies, but also regionally. So as, as I think time has shown in any of these major incidents, no individual town can handle these things themselves. So what is needed is the ability to communicate live through by radio with those mutual aid resources. Secondarily, I will just give you an example, right now, our police, fire and EMS do not have radios that can talk to the public school radio system. The public schools on a different band than our town first responder agencies. It's just one of those things I think that just happened organically over time. And these radios we're going to start with would go to police to start equipping the patrol cars and portable radios. So that at least at the start can be able to talk not only with the school bands, but also our own first responder agencies. But also to future proof, to begin the process of future proofing our fleet to a potential move of our entire public safety radio system to the state backbone. We are not committed to that decision yet. We've heard some, there are other departments that have moved, our peer, a lot of our peers are moving in that direction. Stanford has moved, Norwalk is moving, Wilton is moving to the state backbone. That would require if we move to that system, us replacing all of our radios, vehicle as well as handheld across all of our departments anyways. So this request is every year, it's a running request for three of these radios, which will install police cars every year. And to serve both those functions, to be able to be interoperable as well as to future proof and have a lower cost, should we decide to move to the state backbone system, which is on a different band.
All right, Russ.
Sorry, can these operate under existing cellular coverage or radio coverage for public safety?
They, so these are not part, these don't use cellular, I mean, they can't. They're not connected to cellular. This is, these radios would be able to talk with our existing VHF public safety radio system that we're using today, police, fire, EMS, highway certain. Plus it would have the ability to talk with what we call 800 megahertz UHF. So it can talk to state police, it could talk to Wilton, Stanford, who are moving to the, this system. Plus it can talk with the middle band, which is the 400, which is our public schools are on. So basically you can talk to anybody with public safety radios. The problem is, is they're rather expensive, which if we do this over time, the cost hit, if we move to the state system later, will be lower because we're doing it in smaller bites.
Okay, thanks.
Great job, thank you. Obviously we have a full-time emergency manager director now who's paying a lot more attention to our resiliency in the event of disasters. Phil Shibley, thank you. Phil's a full-time partner, always available, even though he's a part-time assistant. And we thank you for your being there always. And any further questions for Russ?
Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now have, are we half an hour off schedule? What time we were supposed to start? What time, you know what time we were supposed to start? 11:15. Okay, Ms. Tricia Spagnani.
Kevin, Nick, Kathleen, nice to see you again. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So I'm, I'm back to talk about Town Players of New Canaan and give you an update on the project that we have going with the town and Tiger for the powerhouse theater. So this is going to be an update and the initial renewing our request that we came before you last year for the first time to support the project that we have underway for our new lobby and the ADA bathrooms. So we're speaking with you today and then the Board of Finance on February 14th. I thought it would be good if I just took a minute literally to give you an update on the theater. We have five shows in our season this year. The first three have been very successful, The Fantastics, Rocky Horror Picture Show and Joyful Noise. We had racket, record attendance at all of those productions. So we are back at our, probably exceeding our pre-pandemic level, which is excellent for the theater. And it's good to know that the, the town and guests are coming back. And that's, that record attendance includes actually having to cancel one of the weekend performances of The Fantastics because some of the actors got COVID. So even with that, we, we've done very well. So that's good. And of course, we're looking forward to our February production of Ordinary People. It's part of our community outreach program that we've established so that at least one production every year is an opportunity for us to reach deep into the community. So we're doing that in conjunction and partnership with New Canaan Human Services, Bethany Zarro, as well as Silver Hill Hospital. And Dr. Michael Groat, their chief clinical officer is working with us as an advisor to the cast and crew so that we can, or the cast and director, I should say, so that we can portray the characters with empathy and authenticity. It is a story that we think is, is timely for mental health, but it's also about renewal and building, rebuilding family relationships. So we're happy to be part of the conversation and inspire the conversation through the live theater production.
Question. Seventy-six season, where was the play, the Town Players before the powerhouse theater? Everywhere? Itinerant.
Yeah, we were itinerant gypsies.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the school auditoriums.
Very good, thank you.
And how long have you been in the powerhouse?
Forty years.
Forty years.
1983, so exactly, we're, March 19th will be celebrating the opening, 40th night opening.
Good timing.
It is good timing, right? So 40 years, yeah, for sure. So 1947, the Town Players were founded. And 1983 is when they found a permanent home, which has been great. As, and we continue to be stewards. And I'm, I'm looking that we're planning for the next 40 years, the next two or three generations. And that's what we envision. So as you know, the, the project, if I can shift gears specifically to this project. The project started because we jointly in yourselves decided that we needed to add ADA bathrooms to the theater, ADA compliant bathrooms. And then we said, how do we get there? So then we resurrected the idea of adding or expanding the lobby over the current concrete patio. And that was part of the original request, actually from the Town Players in 1982, that this be done. But we think we have a better design, a more historically sensitive design to the building and the overall campus. And we'll also, as you know, turn the current office into the ADA restrooms because that's really the only space that gives us enough room to do what's required so that we have enough facilities to support the theater when it's full, right? With our 115 seats. So that said, the lobby space will also use for rehearsal space. And we also envision, aside from being a wonderful and welcoming lobby, will give us the opportunity to host community events in that space, especially with the little alcove that we're adding, that we could do actually small performances, it could be a mini stage for musical performers. So we think it's going to give us a lot more flexibility, not only to be accessible, but to do additional programming. We're pretty excited about that. So I think we're good on the scope of the project before I move on, any, no questions there? All right.
So you know, the town council approved the use of the potting shed, amending the lease that is 40 years old to, to include the potting shed.
Or exclude for the use by the Town Players. So yes, so we are on our way with that, but we're not here today to talk about that. We're talking specifically about the funding required to complete the lobby project. Lobby and the restrooms.
It does make a campus, it does make a campus, including the outdoor bathrooms, which are not really, but it'll enclose your campus more nicely and.
It will. And for the, the overall campus, it will be finished. And I know we've been talking, we will start talking with Tiger and the architects and the landscape designer because we envision that the outdoor space really should be considered an extension of the theater. Right? So use for anyone, any visitor to the park, but also an opportunity for us to do just that, add, add outdoor events right there in the little community, the campus. Okay, so that's the scope. So now I want to look specifically at the project costs. When we were here a year ago, basically round numbers, we said the lobby and the restrooms were a million dollars. Price has gone up because everything has gone up. We've also had the benefit where the architects went to one of the builders that the town works with, Alden Bailey, to get have a look on the the architectural diagrams, the structural diagrams to update the pricing. So now that we have that, we have even more confidence in the numbers. But certainly as time goes by, we run the risk of the costs increasing. So with that, the total construction and materials is about 930,000. We've added a contingency. And of course, the architect and engineering fees, so we have a total project of 1,129,500, of which we continue to ask the town to contribute 500,000. However, that gets sourced within the town. But from last year, the expectation was that 50% would come from the town budget and the other 50% would come from the ARPA funds. So that's on the town side. The fundings, the other funding then would come from Town Players of New Canaan and our fundraising activities, as well as cash that we have raised. Again, relying on our predecessors at Town Players, along with pledges that we've received. So where we are now is at $248,000 committed from our budget and again pledges. We have an outstanding capital grant request of $50,000, which leaves about $330,000 that we have to raise. And to help us with this fundraising in December, we hired a experienced professional in fundraising. And that's been very good and very educational, but it's given us confidence that we will be able to raise the additional funds. So that's where we are from a funding perspective. So I'm here today to formally ask the Board of Selectmen to consider our request and approve our request in the, this year's budget cycle to fund the half a million dollars that we had requested.
So this is a renewal of last year's request.
Renewal of last year's request.
We have an ARPA, $250,000 sort of as a placeholder with ARPA funds until the project can be approved by the, we approved the 250 last year for ARPA, I believe. Tucker's not here, but I think the Board of Selectmen passed it on. And then we, the Board of Finance paused.
That is my, yes, that's what happened. So yes.
And then Tiger, the 250 capital was in your budget and is still in your budget. It was in your last year, but it didn't go forward, so. So any questions for Patricia? She has, why don't you introduce your colleagues here, beside your husband?
Sorry. Yes, I can introduce Joel Reynolds, right? Is the first vice president and otherwise known as our master carpenter and set builder. And Deborah Burke, who's here is the president of Town Players of New Canaan, as well as the director for Ordinary People.
All volunteer.
And we are all volunteer. Yes, we are all volunteers. Yes. And I should introduce as well Catherine Donnelly, who is the, our fundraising consultant.
A New Canaan resident who's.
And a New Canaan resident.
Experienced fundraiser for libraries and projects. Okay, questions?
No, this is, this is great. I'm, I'm glad you've made some significant headway on the, on the pledges.
Kathleen, questions?
I was a supporter a year ago and continue to be a supporter, so hopefully we get this through.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Board of Finance, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, here we are. Not too much overtime, but we, we will meet again next Tuesday to vote on a budget. Did the vote? Tucker's not here. Yeah, I move adjourn at 12:08.
Second.
Paul Taver? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Feel better, Kathleen.
Thanks, I'll see you on Tuesday.
Hey.